Called the meeting to order of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, and would the clerk please call the roll? Clerk, please call the roll. John?
Oh.
Oh, this is a bad sign. This is a bad sign.
I was looking at all my fans.
Okay.
Debbie Feenster?
Here.
Veronica Frankel.
I'm here.
Katie Simon-Holland.
Here.
Scott Kelly. Probably delayed. John Mayer, here. Malina Raymond.
I'm here.
Angela Taylor.
I'm here.
And our student advised person has probably started her summer vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Trustee Dr. Taylor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Taylor. Our next item is public comment, and we ask that folks come forward during public comment for a three-minute limit per item, and this is generally for topics that are not specifically addressed elsewhere on the agenda. So if you wanted to speak about something that's on the agenda, you have the opportunity to do that when we get to that item. Do you have any public comment, JJ?
Yes. Teagan Sennick.
Welcome, Ms. Sennick.
Please go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Teagan Sennick. I just finished eighth grade at Pine Middle School about a month ago. A book called We're Doing It Wrong: Twenty-Five Ideas in Education That Just Don't Work and How to Fix Them launched at Barnes &amp; Noble. When I went to the launch and found out that none of you were able to attend, I was sad because We're Doing It Wrong is a great book with practical ideas on how to improve education, and it was a shame that you weren't able to hear them. As students, my brother and I felt that the solutions in this book would vastly improve our education. We knew that in order for these solutions to happen, these ideas would have to reach the people with the power to make the change and do the right thing, as you guys. We took this into our own hands and rounded up a bunch of classmates and their families to help us share this amazing book with you. Please enjoy listening while we read We're Doing It Wrong: Twenty-Five Ideas That Just Don't Work in Education and How to Fix Them. We begin with Chapter One. Old School: Age-Based Education. The Problem. There's a flaw so fundamentally embedded in the system that it virtually is the system: age grouping. It cannot be defended on pedagogical grounds. We do it simply because it's far easier to organize and budget a factory-model operation than one in constant flux. Be that as it may, the age-based model is the source of many of our most persistent problems when it comes to delivering quality instruction. First, there is the issue of social promotion, which is a practice of promoting students to the next grade regardless of whether they pass their classes or, more to the point, learn anything. This presents a catch-22 because, perhaps unsurprisingly, students held back with younger peers often feel shamed and thus tend to fail again, also because they often receive no other interventions. But passing a pupil who failed up the ladder seems almost criminal. In fact, according to researchers, neither grade retention nor social promotion is an effective remedy for addressing the needs of students who are experiencing academic, behavioral, or social and emotional difficulties. It's a time-honored but lamentable tradition for teachers to blame the colleagues in the lower grades for sending them students without prerequisite skills for learning class. Then after failing to fix the problem, they send the same students on to the teachers the next grade up, who will then, in turn, blame them. I did this just about every year I taught regular ed seventh grade because I had neither the training nor the time, for example, to teach a middle schooler how to read beyond third grade or the power to make a student who refused to work in the face of all interventions work. If students were never grouped by age to begin with, there would be far less of a stigma where it decided that retention is needed, and if they could take whatever class they were ready for, it wouldn't be grade retention at all. It would be course retention, which wouldn't be remotely as damaging to a student's social standing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Addie Weishardt.
Welcome, Ms. Weishardt. You have three minutes.
How the absurd range of skills teachers are forced to pretend they can address differentiation. I often had classes of thirty-five students. Five or six identified as SPED, Special Education, for entirely different reasons. Another five or six not in SPED but who are nonetheless years behind in their skills. Three or four gifted learners, four ELLs, English Language Learners, two or three with severe behavior issues, and so on. If you think that sounds like an exaggeration, please visit any random public middle school classroom. Courses not grouped by age would still have some spread of skill levels, but you'd never see students who can barely read sitting in the same room with peers who can understand college-level material. How about the very valid complaint that teachers essentially teach to the average student or neglect the high flyers because accountability measures force them to focus almost exclusively on low achievers? It is extremely common, and my experience bears it out. That's when schools set improvement goals for a given year, they tend to focus on moving students whose scores fall below whatever cutoff the state punishes for them. For failing to reach just above that score, this is a logical behavior, of course, because moving those bubble students over the line, which often doesn't require dramatic improvement, has by far the most impact on a school's rating. If students were grouped by readiness rather than age bubble, students would be with other bubble students, and their teachers could focus on exactly what they need, as the same could be said about all other schools at whatever levels they operate. And imagine radically different social atmosphere in schools where it's entirely normal to know and spend time with people outside of one's age group. The Solution. As recently reported in Duke Today, researchers at the Duke University Talent Identification Program and Northwestern University conducted an exhaustive review of educational research. They found that after looking carefully at one hundred years of research, it became clear in acceleration that most forms of ability grouping can be powerful, effective interventions. They can help increase academic achievement for both...
You have thirty more seconds. Go ahead.
For both lower and higher achieving students. Critics claim that ability or readiness grouping is tracking and evidence from the past shows. Indeed, it is untainable number of students one placed on their track never left it. And because many of those on lower tracks were poor and/or minorities, tracking deemed a tool of operation and/or structural racism.
Thank you, Ms. Weishardt.
Julian Sennick.
Welcome, Julian.
...can be used for good or ill. Readiness groups must be fluid and flexible. Students should move up to more challenging levels when they demonstrate readiness. If this is not happening, we're doing it wrong. Critics also claim that students placed in lower-level classes have their self-esteem imperatively damaged, though I've never understood how putting students into classes which they are not prepared or worse misleading them about what skills they do or do not have could promote self-esteem, at least the healthy kind that benefits one in life. My dream system works something like the old school swim lessons. Back in the day when I was forced to take them, my instructors stood by with all the list of strokes and checked off one when I mastered it. When the list was done, I earned the badge and moved to the next level. That's how it runs schools. In lower-grade students would need to earn skill badges and often which in certain combinations would earn them skill levels in the passing age grade. In secondary school, there might be a college-approved course badges like Biology or British Literature, and courses should be broken down into nine-week blocks so they can frequently be offered and repeated much more easily if failed. Perhaps high school badges could be awarded those who earned them with superior performance. But there is a key element of my dream. Non-age group badges done, children would be allowed to leave school at the age of sixteen. Three groups would take advantage of this option. The first would be students who have completed the requirements for their diploma early. This is no good reason for preventing students from graduating ahead of schedule if they can do so. This also means, of course, allowing them to take advanced classes ready for them. The second group would be students certain that college is not their plans, who wish to enter the workforce or as soon as possible. They could earn badges by sixteen, which certified them for certain vocational work more advanced, and vocational badges might take them more years to earn.
Well done, Julian. Thank you.
Haven Flores.
Ms. Flores, welcome. You have three minutes.
But here's the kicker regarding the latter two groups. There would be no age limit for access to public education. If they aren't ready for Level Ten for whatever reason until they are twenty-nine, thirty-nine, or even seventy-nine, they are welcome back. I believe this is a compassionate system. It gives students what they need when they need it, recognizes that there is no shame in vocational careers, and perhaps most importantly, it acknowledges that public schools cannot solve all of society's problems, chiefly poverty and the many issues associated with it. This system recognizes that all challenges in some children's lives make it impossible for them to be learners during the time they are given for that task. By no stretch, it is implied that all means would not be exhausted to keep students in school. But what's new is that if those means are exhausted, the system would finally be equipped to say, "Okay, we did our best. Come back when you're ready. We'll be here for you." Sameness: Goals vs. Methods. The Problem. There is a teacher shortage, and it is only getting worse. Eventually, we will have a full-blown crisis on our hands. It might not be until we reach such a point that we face the fact that teaching is becoming an ever-increasingly undesirable job, and the many reasons this is so. Educators have historically been willing to put up with a lot: disrespect unpaid hours, out-of-pocket expenses, blame for poor student choices. But what becomes intolerable is the steady de-professionalization of their jobs. We know that lack of discretion over how they perform their duties contributes powerfully to a teacher's job's dissatisfaction, and that job dissatisfaction is the number-one reason educators quit. And yet, over the past decade, teachers report feeling less and less autonomous over their classrooms. They are feeling like robots. They tend to deprofessionalize teachers. The trend to deprofessionalize teachers is greatly influenced by our current obsession with conformity. We must all embrace the latest best practice, whether it is a circular model, a teaching style, or a school climate, or a test we must teach. If there's evidence it works somewhere, it must work everywhere, and we must all use the same materials too, the same units, the same novels, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Teri Crowe.
Welcome, Ms. Crowe. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So I chose to read the chapter regarding the writing crisis because I've experienced this writing crisis with my own children. So every fall, college instructors nationwide renew their complaint that the latest batch of students that arrive in their classes cannot write. Not cannot write well, but cannot even meet minimum college-level expectations. Consequently, many colleges have tried to add, have had to add remedial courses. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, one-third of all first- and second-year bachelor's degree students have taken remedial courses. We have reached the sad state of affairs for a few reasons. Here's what I know is required to teach students to write well. One, provide many opportunities to take on meaningful writing tasks. Give timely personalized feedback on rough drafts and chances to revise them. And three, supply instructive critique on final drafts for use on the next task. This sort of program is virtually impossible in K through twelve right now. There used to be actual writing courses offered in many schools, but they turned into language arts classes so English teachers could teach reading and writing in the same amount of time. Hardly anyone teaches writing anymore, certainly not in the way it has been described above. The second equally problematic issue has arose as increased pressure on teachers to engage in cross-curricular lesson planning with one or more other subjects. This can be very effective at times for students to write a persuasive letter to the editor, for example, about cleaning up the local environment while they are studying in science. However, here's the most important thing I know about teaching writing. A real passion for it is ignited in the students when they are free to find their own subjects, and that is simply not possible when every writing assignment task must be yoked to something already in the curriculum.
Spencer Crowe.
Welcome, Spencer.
The solution to this problem is we should teach writing the way it is taught in our GT program. Students are exposed... Students are exposed... Sorry.
It's okay.
Students are exposed to models of varying quality and given time to draft in class on a regular basis. They write two essays per quarter. Reasonably-sized writing courses must be added to the K-12 programs, or English teachers' class leads must be significantly reduced. At the very least, administrators should find a way to provide time during the school week for English, teachers to read and provide feedback on students' writing. My former high school juniors who arrived to my class never learned a single way to shape any type of essay, couldn't believe such structures existed. They had such gratitude for my sharing blueprints of essay types, various essay types, but the main reason they embraced learning them enthusiastically was they were given the freedom to write about whatever they wished. When asked what makes my writing instruction work, expose students to various writing tasks, help them practice the skills necessary to execute them well, and then allow them to use those skills to express themselves freely.
Thank you, Spencer.
Talia Crowe.
Welcome, Ms. Crowe. You can pull that microphone down. There you go.
My name is Talia Crowe, and I am eleven years old. I chose to read the chapter Group Work. I chose to read this chapter because group work is frustrating for me because someone always is bossy and takes over, or someone just doesn't do anything and just watches. Just a generation or two ago, students did not regularly collaborate on assignments. They typically sat at their desks, did their work, and then handed in. This is no longer the case, but as is so often the case when we became enamored of new ideas. We take them too far. Many teachers now hesitate to plan a lesson without some form of cooperative or group learning. Of course, students divert many benefits from well-designed group assignments. Research shows that cooperative learning leads to greater efforts to achieve better relationships and increased psychological health. I'm a big fan of group work. It's central to what we do in the GT program. So what's the problem? Well, first, there's the fact that group assignments are often not well-designed and thus create more conflict than collaboration, or they are not preceded by any form of independent thinking and thus devolve into what some call ignorance sharing. What can also often happen, according to author Diane Senchall, is one group member tends to take control, and the thoughts of those who are quieter or don't fit in socially are discarded. When participating in groups is always required, a clear message is sent to quieter students, introverts, there is something wrong with preferring to work alone. This message is troublesome because, as Susan Cain, leader of the Quiet Revolution, asserts, introversion is not a problem. In fact, introverts have valuable contributions to make to society, but they need time to make them alone. Teaching introverts especially or... Imp... Sorry.
It's all right. You're doing great. Doing great.
Implicitly. Implicitly, that their very nature is fundamentally flawed, is educational malpractice. Solution. To be clear, all students, both intro and extroverts, need to develop collaborative skills. Naturally, this may be much harder for introverts than extroverts, but every student must also be able to commit sustained focused efforts to solitary tasks and to engage in thoughtful reflection. Teachers should also seek and use strategies that accommodate both types of learners when appropriate. For example, think, write, pair, and share. But most important, it must be absolutely clear to students that both introverted and extroverted personalities are to be respected and valued.
Thank you very much, Talia.
Sean Crowe.
Mr. Crowe, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm reading the chapter of Mr. Slater's book titled The Zombie Apocalypse, which has to do with early school start times and the effects of sleep deprivation on our children. The zombie apocalypse is already upon us. Just poke your head into the average middle or high school where adolescents are required to be in class sometimes as early as 7:30 a.m. You'll see shuffling, semi-conscious creatures with half-opened eyes, some evidently with broken necks, no longer able to hoist their heads up. Sleep deprivation is a serious and widespread problem in American society, one that surely exacerbates our many chronic health issues. But adequate sleep is not a luxury. It's a necessity to maintain both physical and mental health. There are, of course, tremendous economic and social pressures that lead adults to forego necessary sleep, but there is no good reason to impose a sleep-deprived lifestyle on our children. Here's why. A growing body of research shows that sleep-deprived adolescents can't learn well, are unhealthy, make bad choices, drive dangerously, and generally don't develop to their full potentials. And if that isn't disturbing enough, the Journal of Childhood Psychology and Psychiatry recently published a study concluding that sleep deprivation in teens is a risk factor for adult crime. It found that sleepy adolescents were more likely to be antisocial during adolescence and were four-and-a-half times more likely to commit a crime by the age of twenty-nine. The solution? This is not simply a matter of bedtimes. Going to sleep at a reasonable hour is, of course, part of the solution, but before we propose any remedies, we need to understand that a teenager's inclination to stay up late and sleep late has biological and physiological roots. In other words, within reason, it's perfectly natural. Unfortunately, recognizing this doesn't make finding a solution much easier. This is because school start times are not the way they are because anyone thinks they're good. They are a matter of practicality, access to extracurricular activities, and entrenched habit. It's impractical to imagine that sweeping changes will be made requiring later start times, but the American Psychological Association has proof that schools in districts across the country which have voluntarily switched to later start times have experienced multiple benefits, including a reduced number of disciplinary actions, decreased accidents involving students, and increased GPAs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
Hattie Hutchins.
Welcome, Mr. Hutchins.
Thank you. Chapter Twenty-four: A Class Issue: Homework. Schools should think long and hard about their homework policies. Burdening students with too much, especially in the younger grades, can undermine everything educators hope to accomplish. But the idea of banning it altogether is misguided. The real problem is that much of what goes under the name of homework is time-wasting busy work, and all this fact, no doubt, counts for why so many students and parents vehemently condemn it. Opponents also say it causes undue stress, strains families, and, bottom line, does not contribute to learning. Useless homework deserves every bit of criticism it receives. Let's abolish it! But effective teachers who wish to prepare students for college know they cannot possibly hope to do it without requiring some work outside of class in the upper grades. English teachers are the first to scoff at the thought of teaching literature without asking students to read books at home or having them write substantial essays in class on a regular basis. It's interesting to note that one of the hottest innovative trends in education right now is the flipped classroom, which frees teachers from instruction during class to answer questions as students engage with rather than receive content. This is accomplished by requiring students to watch videos or read information ahead of time at home. It is also pointed out that homework is a socioeconomic issue because only students with enough leisure time in their lives can successfully complete it. In other words, middle-class students. There is no disputing this observation, but neither is there disputing the observation that college itself is the very embodiment of middle-class values. Prohibiting the type of behavior, independent study, required for students in college for students who would most benefit from access to it in the name of fairness seems paradoxical at best.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins.
Carter Stone.
Welcome, Mr. Stone.
So, good morning. I am Carter Stone with the solution. Homework should not be assigned unless it's absolutely necessary, and it's surely never necessary in kindergarten. That's first. Second, it should be entirely clear to students why they need to do it, or better, complete a given assignment at home. Third, grades associated with homework should be minimal relative to the final assessment it is meant to prepare students for. If homework is not preparing students for the final assessment, it should be considered by definition not necessary. Ideally, homework would not be graded at all, as the natural consequences of not doing it should teach powerful lessons. But as we've discussed, children often lack judgment and the ability to consider long-term consequences. Also of critical importance is whether the curriculum is engaging. It's unrealistic to expect every course of study to inspire such enthusiasm that it spills over the home front. But when students are interested in their work and when they have some choices in how to pursue it, they are much more willing to tackle it out of the classroom. Finally, regarding students whose lives make it difficult for them to do homework, whether because they are required to be caretakers at home, have jobs, lack of access to technology, or receiving no family support, the answer is not depriving of all other students of the benefits of reasonable amounts of well-conceived homework. Rather, educators must identify these students and put structure into place to help them succeed. This might mean providing an extra study hall or an after-school tutoring session, finding someone to donate a laptop, or working with parents, if it's possible, to support home study. What we can't do or continue to do is allow our understanding of disadvantage to harm those who we wish to help.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Avery Sarek.
Thank you. So, um, now we've heard some of Mr. Slater's great ideas, and some, not only the ideas, some of the solutions, but that was only a few. We still have twenty-five more, oh, uh, not twenty-five, many more. So, I present to you with two things. One, your own copy of "We're Doing It Wrong." May I please pass these out?
Thank you very much.
No problem. And two, a challenge. Once you've all read it, I challenge you to pick one problem, not many, just one, and find the solution to it and implement it into our schools today. Now, only you guys are, uh, only you guys have enough power and goodwill to make our schools better and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Avery, and thank you. And thank you to all of you for bringing this forward. Do we have more in your group? Okay. I just want to thank you, students, and also parents, uh, for taking the time to read the book and to share that with us. Thankfully, some of the things that you mentioned, we have taken action on, including the homework policy, which we recently approved, so, yes. Yeah, kids like that one, yeah. But, uh, and parents do as well, and educators do as well. So, thank you very much for, um, your dedication and your commitment, and especially for engaging, uh, our young people in helping us to solve the problem. So, thank you for being here today. And thank you for the book, thank you for the book.
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, welcome.
Hello, President Holland, Superintendent Davis, Honorable Board Members. My name is John Appolito. I'm a former K-12 teacher. I have four kids, uh, one is out of the district, the other three are still in, and I'm president of Protect Nevada Children. And, um, I'm concerned that this board and Superintendent Davis are jeopardizing the personal data and the future of sixty-four thousand kids in the district. And we come in here, we try to educate you guys, you shake your head yes, and from what we can tell, you do nothing. Under the leadership of Superintendent Davis and this board, Washoe County School District allowed a third party to give psychological assessments to students without parental consent. And that assessment is the DESA, the Deveraux Student Strengths Assessment. I have handouts for everybody, there's nine copies there, I have a few extras if anyone out here would like one. Everything I'm saying is documented. The second thing that this board allowed is these free education vendors in Washoe County, and one of them is Edmodo. Last school year, Edmodo had a huge data breach. During that data breach, the student IDs of all the children in the district who use Edmodo were for sale on the dark web. What's so frustrating about that is that student ID, a few things are problematic with that. One, that student ID is the same student ID Infinite Campus and the Nevada Department of Education used to track children from preschool, probably to death, at least to the workforce. And you guys chose not to educate parents that their children's data, student ID, was for sale on the dark web. That's very problematic, because you guys are the ones that got the kids into the software in the first place. Two months ago, Cal Berkeley released the study that tells us that most of these free education software and applications are not in compliance with COPA. And that's the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act. That's what's supposed to protect children under thirteen, protect their data. Now, legally, these free third-party apps are able to create secret profiles on our children, share our children's data with unknown fourth parties. That's what's legal. Now we find out, now we find out, many of them are illegally tracking our children. And we've asked you guys to tell parents what's happening. You do nothing, sometimes you shake your heads, superintendent, led by the superintendent, I'm so frustrated. My kids don't use it, many kids wouldn't use it if their parents knew what was going on. Yet you sit up there, you get free stuff, you think it's great, you are jeopardizing the future of these children, and I do not appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
Natha Anderson.
Welcome, Ms. Anderson.
Good afternoon, President Simon Holland and Superintendent Davis. I'm going to just very quickly speak about one issue that's really facing our members of the Washoe Education Association today. Last week on Friday, we received an email saying that our insurance could possibly go up by fourteen point eight percent. We know that this will be discussed during tomorrow's meeting, um, but I just want to put that on your radar. We're very concerned for our members and for, whether they're teachers or counselors, nurses, deans, uh, it's, it's definitely having an impact on how we are feeling at the end of the year. Um, I, when that was sent out from the district, we, I right away sent out a memo very quickly to the members and said, hey, get me information if you want me to speak about this tomorrow at the Insurance Committee. And the number of emails I've received back already of people wanting to say that they don't even know if they'll be able to return is very concerning. Um, it is a retention issue, it is a recruitment issue, and I'm just putting it out there for you guys just to be aware of for the future. I realize again that this is a decision of the Insurance Committee first, with a recommendation to come to this board in August. But fourteen point eight percent represents a huge pay cut for our members. Obviously, the district would be paying for the people that are teaching, but we have so many of our dependents that we're paying for. Uh, we are getting a, basically, for the people that are able to stay as educators, uh, we get about a two-point-seven pay increase, more or less, uh, for our salary schedules we continue to move up. This would be a huge pay cut, and I'm just, I'm incredibly worried about our members, whether they are teachers or counselors, and I'm also worried about our sister association of WSP. So I just wanted to put that out there for you to be aware of in the next coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, Natha.
I'm not Chris King. Can we go out of order? Me first, Chris after? Is that, is that okay?
That's your request, I know you're all together.
Yes, thank you very much. President Holland, um, trustees, Superintendent Davis, for the, for the record, my name is Helen Leadholm, I'm CEO for St. Mary's. We want to express our sincere gratitude to the Washoe County Trustees and to Superintendent Davis for opening up the process and allowing us the opportunity to participate, to increase access, decrease costs, and provide the highest quality healthcare for the district on a non-exclusive basis. We took it to mean that St. Mary's would have the chance to bid on all aspects of providing healthcare for Washoe County School District employees and retirees. We sent you a letter yesterday in hopes of clarifying our positions. This is, these are copies, thank you very much.
And we did receive that.
Thank you, thank you. Um, we feel that there may have been some miscommunication between Washoe County School District and St. Mary's as, as to what this opportunity meant. What we were giving was a request to bid on only a small fraction of the total contract. St. Mary's provided a proposal that included hospital, our medical group, primary care providers, and specialists as well as our urgent care, all on a non-exclusive basis. The proposal and the cover letter, uh, is here in full transparency. Thank you. Our proposal also included claims management and other services. We are providing a copy of this non-exclusive bid we submitted to you today. We reached out early, knowing the exclusive, the exclusive three-year contract was expiring on December thirty-first of this year. We want to impress upon you how early and often we approached you and the Coalition in this process. Should the current exclusive contract with Renown and Hometown Health be renewed, Washoe County School District employees and retirees will be facing increased cost and lack of choice. As you are aware, and it's in the letter we sent yesterday, St. Mary's contacted Nevada Business Group on Health, or the Coalition, back in December two thousand and seventeen to request the opportunity to bid on this healthcare contract. We feel there is time to consider the proposal provided by St. Mary's, particularly on a healthcare budget item of fifty-seven million eight hundred thousand dollars annually. St. Mary's is presenting an option for employees and retirees and not requiring exclusivity. Our proposal provides up to an eleven percent, or seven million dollar reduction, of, year over year. Members will see a decrease in co-pay and co-insurance, a lower max out-of-pocket, and have choice. Thank you so much for this opportunity, we would love to continue to work with you. We're ready to go on January first of two thousand and nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leadholm. Mr. King, you're up. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Chris King, Vice President, St. Mary's Health Network. Um, I'm here really to talk about the budget. We know, uh, the work that Mark Mathers has done to, um, get that budget deficit down to seven point two million. However, um, as was mentioned, teachers and, uh, any employees received a letter stating that your, uh, benefit costs, uh, are going to go up by fourteen point eight percent. I know for a fact that you were budgeted only for ten percent, uh, increase. Uh, that's a significant difference, uh, in additional cost that the district will have to figure out. We also know, uh, based on presentation for the Insurance Committee, that currently your, um, uh, insurance is running at a seventeen percent increase, and as Lloyd Barnes stated, even who is the broker, even at best, um, you can expect to only get to fourteen point five percent in increases in cost, uh, if, if costs for the rest of the year are managed effectively. Again, we want to reiterate, choice and competition improves quality and reduces costs. Over the two-year period from two thousand and fifteen until two thousand and seventeen, when the city of Reno's medical expense, um, increased ten percent or two point two million, Hometown Health, Renown, which represents about forty-two percent of the city's medical expenses, increased one point nine million, or twenty-two percent. The other fifty-eight percent of the city's medical expenses, including St. Mary's, increased only two percent, or three hundred and seventeen thousand. Again, competition, choice, uh, for the city of Reno, and reduce costs relative to the school district. We have presented a non-exclusive proposal. As Helen reiterated, um, that could be up to eleven percent decrease in costs, six point five million dollars per year. The district would not have to increase rates. Medical expenses would remain fixed. The subsequent two years of the proposal, it would also remain fixed. Again, we've got a vested interest in the financial success of Washoe County School District, and we continue to ask for your support. Um, I want to note that I also have a zombie child, thirteen-year-old, uh, who attends Swope, so, again, we are vested in the success of the school district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. King. Welcome, is it Ms. Latori?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity. Um, again, my name's Amanda, and I'm a product of the Washoe County School District, born and raised here, graduated from the IB program at Worcester. My husband's also a teacher for the school district and has been for four years. Um, it's been great to see him find something he loves. We're also raising our three girls in this community. My daughter starts kindergarten in the fall, and, um, I've been fortunate enough to work for St. Mary's for nine years and get to see and witness the excellent quality of care, you know, on a daily basis. The, the robust plan that St. Mary's has proposed, um, will allow my husband to choose to receive care from a place that he has grown to trust through my career in the delivery of our girls as well as their medical care. Um, as a spouse of someone working in the district, as well as having many friends, um, that are teachers and administrators, having choice, especially a choice with reduced expenses for employees and their families, um, through lower co-pays and deductibles, is one less barrier to care, and we all know that, you know, access to care is one of the most important parts. It's also another benefit and perk for working with the school district. Um, as was mentioned before, it's no surprise that it's a challenge to recruit and retain teachers, and having an enticing benefits package with choice in providers, as well as affordable healthcare for families on a teacher's salary, may assist in recruiting and retaining employees, um, in our growing community. I urge the Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis to consider St. Mary's proposal for medical care for Washoe County School District employees to allow choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Welcome, Ms. Mullins.
Good afternoon, Board Members. Cynthia Mullins, I've been a nurse in northern Nevada, participating in the care of patients in three of our hospitals here, and have seen firsthand how the quality of patient care is impacted by competition, healthy competition between the hospitals. And I want to strongly encourage you all to help with that process by allowing choice for your employees. And you've heard from people that are speaking better than I can about that, but in decreasing mortality rates, returns on admissions, hospital-acquired infections or any infection rates, all of those things that impact the quality of our life. Being a citizen who's now, um, thinking about employment with the school district, the ability to have choice and benefits is a huge, um, encouragement for people to come and work for the school district. I also have three members of my family who enjoy benefits from the school district, and I know they would love to have the choice of what healthcare provider to receive care from. So, thank you for considering that, and it also impacts our community by having that kind of choice and competition in our community among healthcare providers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins.
Jeff Church.
Mr. Church, welcome.
Thank you.
I don't think I can read your name tag from here, Jeff.
Jeff Church, and if you can't see the back, candidate for school board. Thank you for that plug. Hope that doesn't count in my three minutes. Anyway, good af- good afternoon, folks. Yeah, my name is Jeff Church, I am a candidate for Washoe County School Board in Election Day today. I do run a website, renotaxrevolt.com. And I had a little speech written today that I was going to talk about, but I was shocked. I came in, and I spoke in it City Council, County Commission, I've spoken here many times, as you know, and now I'm told that I cannot speak, public comment, on an item on the agenda. Now, I, I served in, well, I'll admit, a couple conflicts in the war. I served as an Air Force officer fighting for the right to free speech, I'm a VFW Life Member, and now I'm told by the chair at the entry and by here that we're only supposed to talk on comments not specifically addressed elsewhere on the agenda. Well, among other things, I'd like to talk about the superintendent's contract. You put it dead last on the agenda. I think that's an intentional act to dissuade people from talking. You pack us into this room, it's hot even without my candidate vest on, it's packed, and we have to wait until who knows when to speak on that agenda item? That's wrong. That's dead wrong. Now, it's already one-thirty. When is that going to be on? Do I have to, I'm hungry, I gotta go, I'm dying of thirst. Do I have to wait till two-thirty, three-thirty? Can I sneak out and get some pizza and come back? I don't know, and by the time I come back, I may have missed it. So, I'm very, very concerned. Number two is an agenda item, you have three point one concerning, uh, basically, it takes away the right of teachers and staff to defend themselves and students. It notifies attackers that there is a carte blanche prohibition on the arming of teachers and staff in the Washoe County School District, no matter what school, how far away, et cetera. Hopefully, I'll talk on that later, since I'm not allowed to talk on that now, but I do have an email from Chuck Allen, our current sheriff, that I'll put to the secretary that opposes your point of view, that says you're wrong when you say that people oppose that. He is in favor of arming teachers and staff, so I'll give that to the secretary. And, again, you didn't put that out, there was no notice to the public, we never had any way. Now, I'm a firearm instructor, I've taught, I've taught security, I've taught peace officers, I've taught CCW. Uh, I consider myself an expert in the field. Nobody reached out to allow my input before you did this. I think it was hidden on the agenda for that purpose. There was no PR release saying you want input. So that's, again, once again, that's wrong. The Governor's Task Force on school, on school safety is still meeting. Texas just came out with their report. Texas just came out with their report. So why do we have to jump the gun, and that was a pun, and vote on this today before the Governor's Task Force tells us and gives us some direction from their experts? So I urge you not to take action on that today, and hopefully I'll be able to hold out and get something to drink and come back and speak on that, too. Thank you.
Mr. Church, you're welcome to my water if you're dying of thirst.
I'm going to get a soda.
Judy Inghman.
And I will note, while Ms. Inghman is coming forward, that for quite some time, our board agenda has been publicly noticed, that the public comment item invites comments from the public on topics not specifically addressed elsewhere in the agenda. So that's been a standing item. Yes, ma'am? Please go ahead.
Judy Inghman, I live in Reno, and I cannot make my comments because I have to wait till the end of the meeting. So I'm a little disappointed in that. But I wanted to thank the group that was here. It's so nice to see some young people who are really interested in their education and what is happening in the schools. It's too bad they're not on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Inghman. That's all at this time. Thank you very much. We will then move on to 1.05, which is action to adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
No move.
Motion by trustee mayor.
Second.
Second by trustee Dr. Taylor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. JJ, have we heard from trustee Kelly? Did we hear whether he's?
He is on his way. His son's doctor's appointment ran late.
All right. I just wanted to make sure we knew what was happening with him. Okay, items under consent agenda, items 2.01 is the approval of the consent agenda, and we have a very long consent agenda, which goes through items 2.02 to 2.33. So I would invite any trustees who want to take anything out of the consent agenda for discussion. Anyone mention anything? We did have questions on the consent agenda, and staff did provide responses to those questions on the consent agenda. One of the questions related to 2.22, which was the renewal of the request for proposal for Infinite Campus, which Mr. Eppolito mentioned earlier, and we did include in the public record the privacy and confidentiality policies and compliance with student data privacy policies at the federal level, and those are included as an addendum in the contract. So that, want to make sure that is publicly available and folks notice that. And just so folks know about resolutions or anything on this agenda, all of it was posted according to our NRS and our public law, and was posted last week, so it has been available for public review for the last week. Again, any questions on the, or anything you want to take out of consent? Okay. We'll take public comment on the consent agenda now if you. John Eppolito. Go ahead, Mr. Eppolito.
You had to go and say my name, President Holland. No, just kidding, I circled it, I was going to mention something. The Infinite Campus, first, there's a couple things with Infinite Campus. One, we pay a whole bunch of money to Infinite Campus to store data on our children forever, and most parents don't know what's in there unless they go way out of their way to figure it out. Because the most important data that Infinite Campus stores on our children is not accessible to parents. That's number one. Number two, Infinite Campus has already had numerous data breaches around the country. You guys keep giving them, I guess, a half a million dollars this time around. You keep paying these people handsomely, our children's data is not safe, and parents don't know what's in there, and I think it's wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eppolito. And just for clarification, Infinite Campus is the state-prescribed standard for student information, so we comply with the state requirement for that system. Do we have any other public comment on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by trustee Dr. Taylor. Second by Vice President Raymond. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to the items under number three. Pardon me. First item under number three is 3.01, consideration of approval of Washoe County School District Board Resolution 18-003, a resolution of Board of Trustees, the Washoe County School District, reaffirming their commitment to a safe and secure learning and working environment, and declaring their opposition to proposals to arm educators and education support professionals in our public schools. We have provided a copy of the proposed resolution. This was certainly brought forward, among other people, by request from the teachers. It is supported by our school police chief. It is also supported by the School Resource Officers Association, who are the law enforcement officers in schools. So I would welcome any comments by board members. Personally, I'm very proud of the district for stepping up, and I think the timing is such that we can convey to the Governor's Safety Task Force this district's feelings about that very important issue. If no one has any comments at this time, we'll call for public comment. Napa Anderson. Welcome back, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Napa Anderson, representing the educators of Washoe County. Teachers, counselors, nurses, deans, whoa, turn on my sound, librarians. I am so happy that you are bringing this forward. It is such a timely and important document for us to bring forward for a number of reasons. Number one, we are here to teach. We are here to counsel. We are here to help our students in a safe environment. We already have this actually in our NRS 202, it's in the, thank God, it's in the resolution, 202.265. But the fact that this body is also considering this separately is such a huge thank you, and also a recognition of the fact that we have been hired to teach. We have not been hired to bring in a weapon. There's a few items in this, in the resolution that I really would like to point out. The first is the lack of evidence. There's no evidence that supports the arming of educators and education support staff will actually help our schools. The second item that I think is very important to know, our schools lack the mental health, we lack funding, as has already been stated more than a few times. But towards the bottom, it says many schools lack the mental health counselors, psychologists, and social workers we need to identify and work with students. If there is something that can be done, this is one way to start. So I just ask for your approval of this resolution. It would, it sends a message, and it's an important message for us to hear. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Jeff Church. Mr. Church, you didn't have to wait long.
I almost snuck out for a soda. I'm glad I didn't. Thank you very much. For the record, Jeff Church, I want to stand firmly opposed to the listed resolution on various grounds, as articulated below, and I did email you my handout. The issue of school safety overall is complex, and very complex. And then within that, the issue of armed persons on campus is a tiny piece of that puzzle. The issue of armed staff is another piece of the puzzle that is complex and not something to be taken lightly. The board, again, is jumping the gun by acting unilaterally without waiting for the results of the Governor's Task Force on school safety. The state of Texas just released their report. Have you read that? Let's read that and see what it says. Contrary to the numerous falsehoods, and they are absolute falsehoods, in your whereas, experts such as myself favor the arming of qualified and trained staff in some cases. Contrary to the whereas, attached, I gave the secretary an email from Chuck Allen in which he states in part, quote, "truly supports arming our educators," end quote. The issue of self-defense of employees may also be a matter of working conditions subject to negotiation under Nevada revised statute. Each of your whereas, factually wrong and biased, for example, show me where the current federal agencies you list oppose arming staff. I couldn't find it. You falsely state, and I'm going to try and make it brief, that law enforcement professionals oppose this. I'm a law enforcement professional trained as a firearm instructor, and I'm in favor, again, in limited circumstances, of the option of armed staff. I might ask, for example, that you consider, it's not just armed people, but what about, like, in the state of Ohio, they allow rifles to be kept in a safe, accessible only to trained people? It's not like everybody's running around carrying a gun, but your carte blanche prohibition takes all the options off the table. Now, I might add that in Pearl, Mississippi, a teacher retrieved a handgun from a truck and stopped an attacker that had already killed two students. You can't deny the facts. Armed teachers, in many cases, do prevent attacks and save our students. I remind you, Washoe County is a big county, and not all schools have adequate law enforcement personnel nearby. I remind you that many years ago, Washoe County School Police themselves were not armed, and the board realized the folly of that decision, much like the folly of this decision. I remind you, too, that at least 10 states by law allow staff members to carry firearms on school grounds, and I listed those in my handout. After diligent research, a Florida State Legislative Committee approved a school marshal program to train unarmed teachers. So are they all misguided? Are they not reading the same things you're reading? Why are they doing that? Numerous other states are silent on it, and numerous school boards allow armed teachers. So again, let's wait. That's all I'm asking. Let's have some discussions, some input, let some experts talk. Let's not rush to judgment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church. And again, as Ms. Anderson said, NRS currently prohibits weapons on school campuses, except in the case of law enforcement personnel, and with other limited exceptions. And Washoe County does have some of those exceptions for personal defense, et cetera. But this is a resolution about the carte blanche, all-encompassing arming of educators. Again, our school district police department and the National Association of School Resource Officers, who are the law enforcement officers representing schools in the United States, have opposed that proposal. So I would welcome any other discussion? Is there any other public comment? No other public comment? Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Trustee Frankel.
And the reason I'll make it is, I believe that this is a very, it's a very painful conversation about the violence in our schools, and there's a lot of emotion around it and a lot of desire to fix the problem. And I think, as Mr. Church said, it is a complex issue. And the quick solution that has been, the overall solution to arm educators, I think, is one that's well-intentioned, but I also think is also flawed. Because what it does is it removes the responsibility from the broader community to address the issue of violence, to address the issue of violence in our schools, and to address the issue of resources that our school districts need, not just for safety, but for teachers, for counselors, and for others who can build those relationships with students. So I really appreciate the writing that's been done in this resolution, and I am proud to make this motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approves Washoe County School District Board Resolution 18003, a resolution affirming their commitment to a safe and secure learning and working environment.
Give me a second.
As a veteran, I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously from those present. Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.02, and Mr. Mathers is here, our Chief Financial Officer, consideration of adoption of Board Resolution 18-004, resolution of intent proposing the issuance of up to $300 million in general obligation bonds additionally secured with pledged revenues providing the manner, form, and content of the notices, and authorizing officers of the district to take other actions necessary to complete the issuance and related matters. Mr. Mathers.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, Mark Mathers, CFO, and with me is Ryan Henry from our Bond Counsel, Sherman &amp; Howard. This action would continue the authorization process for issuance of the second series of WC-1 bonds. As you know, these bonds pledge the 54-cent sales tax approved by voters in November of 2016. And although this resolution of intent in our prior actions outline a process for issuance of up to $300 million in bonds, will likely break up the issuance of bonds into multiple series. Just so you know, what we're talking about really is, the next series that we would issue in the fall would be for bonds to pay for construction of Arrow Creek Middle School and a new elementary school in Spanish Springs. And then after that, we would look towards a series to pay for construction of Wild Creek whenever the land issue, land issues resolve for that school. So previously, just as background, I'd come to you for authorization to go to the Debt Management Commission for approval of these bonds. We received that approval from the Debt Management Commission, and now this next step is the resolution of intent. This starts a three-week notification process, and also starts the clock on a 90-day petition period. So after approval of this resolution of intent by this board, if you choose to do so, we'd go through that process, come back to you in late July for a public hearing, and then actual bond resolution in late September. So with that, I'll end my presentation and open up for questions.
Okay. Did you introduce your colleague?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you were distracted.
I was. Yeah, we were talking in class, I'm sorry.
So Ryan, I don't know if you have anything to add. Ryan Henry from Sherman &amp; Howard.
Mark summed it up.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm excited.
Yep, we have public comment. Mr. Church? Jeff Church.
Folks, I couldn't resist. For the record, Jeff Church, not opposed to the bonds or anything in any way, but, and I've been out of town, but to the best of my knowledge, there's still no approval of a audit of the Capital Projects Fund. It's building, you know, what, $200 million high schools? And according to my records, there has never, ever been an audit of Capital Projects. And especially now after WC-1, there's a need for it. So I might be missing something in my couple weeks I've been away, but I understand the Audit Committee didn't meet like it was going to last week, and that's probably good because I can be at the next one. But I urge you, if we're going to spend all this money on bonds and projects, that it's only reasonable that we have a audit of that specific fund. And we've had spot audits before, and they found problems. So you can't say, oh, you know, and the CAFER does not cover that. So that's a cop-out when you say, oh, we have our annual audit. They don't look in detail at Capital Projects. So again, I urge you, go ahead and approve this, but let's get some audits in place for these programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church. And just for the benefit of the public, we do post every single expenditure in that fund online, so it is transparently available, and we have every project identified that the money's being spent for. We also have every bid posted online for every project in the Capital Fund. Mr. Mathers, would you like to comment?
No, I think that was a nice summary.
Okay. And this board also did request that the Capital Funding Protection Committee, from capital funds, hire a specific internal auditor to monitor those, because we do recognize the very, very critical importance of transparency and also accuracy in the reporting of those funds. But again, all of those expenditures are readily available to the public now, so. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Vice President Raymond, you'd like to make a motion?
I will. As a member of the Debt Management Commission, I can say that the meeting last month, everyone was just excited to move forward with this once again, and there were no concerns or questions, so I will make the motion. I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Board Resolution 18-004, a resolution of intent proposing the issuance of up to $300 million in general obligation bonds, providing the manner, form, and contact of the notices, and authorizing officers of the district to take other actions necessary to complete the issuance and related matters.
Motion by Vice President Raymond, second by trustee Dr. Taylor. Is there any further discussion? This is very exciting. It enables us to not only be building new schools, but also continuing with our program of work on our inner core schools, so thank you for bringing it forward to us. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Did you make the trip up from Las Vegas for this, Ryan?
I'm actually here.
Oh, good, okay. We, I wanted to give you more time if you'd flown all the way up. Okay. Item 3.03, approval of school meal lunch price increases as required by the United States Department of Agriculture as follows. Elementary school student lunch from $2.70 increasing to $2.80, and secondary school student lunch increasing from $2.95 to $3.05. And Pete is here, and you are not, Leanka, I know, so I'll let you go ahead.
Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer. Now, I am joined by Mike Supple, our Assistant Director of Nutrition Services, who will go through this item for you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Yes, part of the USDA requirement is that we keep up to speed on what the USDA reimburses us for free meals for students. And so currently, our weighted average price in Washoe County School District is $2.77. The target weighted average price for school year 18, 19 is $2.19. The target weighted average price for school year 18, 19 is $2.92. So we are 15 cents behind right now, so that's why we are requesting the 10-cent increase per USDA standards. We are not going up the whole rate because they set it in 10-cent increments, and that's what we've been doing for the last couple of years. So that's what I got.
Thank you. And when you say weighted average, that's inclusive of elementary and secondary school, based on the number of meals that we provided each?
Correct. It's a blend of the pricing and the meals served. Because of the number of elementary students we have, it's kind of skewed towards the lower end of that.
Gotcha. Who's having dental work done over there? Yes, trustee Frankel.
Thank you, President Holland. Thank you very much for this information. Could you say a little bit more, without getting into too much weeds, but a little bit more about the paid lunch equity tool and what that is, so I can understand how that's used to help us determine this amount?
Paid lunch equity tool is something supplied by the USDA to make sure districts are following the proper pricing. And so it kind of takes your weighted average of the lunches you provide at the different levels and the number of meals you serve, and kind of, you know, gives you an average of that. And the target is, like this year, our reimbursement that we get from the USDA for a free student is $3.31. For a paid student that pays cash, we get a reimbursement of 39 cents. And so they like to see that difference made up in what we charge our paid meal price students. The only thing I'll add is, they just want to make sure, the USDA wants to make sure that we're not subsidizing paid students with federal funds. And so we have to keep up with that pace of what we're getting reimbursement of what the meal actually charges, so we're not actually subsidizing paid students.
Good clarification. Thank you. Any other questions on this? Of course, we always hate to have to charge more, but I think everybody recognizes that cost of goods is going up in every part of the budget, and certainly transporting meals, fuel increases, all of that increases our costs. So thank you for keeping it to a low increase. Any further discussion? Is there a motion? I think it's your turn, Scott.
I'll tackle this. I move that the School Board approve, or I move that the Board approve, school meal lunch price increases as required by the United States Department of Agriculture as follows. Elementary school student lunch from $2.70 to $2.80, and secondary school student lunch from $2.95 to $3.05.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Is there a second? Second by trustee Dr. Feimster. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Item 3.04 is a discussion and consideration of preliminary approval for the proposed revision of Board Policy 4214, Drug-Free Workplace, which includes revision of language related to alcohol, controlled substance, prescription medication, and tobacco and e-cigarette possession and use by staff, and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. And before us, we have outgoing Chief Human Resources Officer, Don Huckabee, and like, outgoing like this week, right? Next week, okay. And we won't announce your huge goodbye party that we're all going to come. And then incoming Chief Human Resources Officer, Emily Ellison. Is there, do you have a presentation to make or any questions from the Board? I know we did go over this in great detail at the Policy Committee. Anything you wanted to add or highlights you wanted to give us? Emily?
Excuse me. Emily Ellison, for the record. Good afternoon, President Simon Holland, Superintendent Davis, and members of the Board. No changes, but we just wanted to confirm that we were making revisions to the policy based on changes in the law and clarifying the language, so that our position is clear on a drug-free workplace.
Thank you. And I know we had a lot of discussion at the Policy Committee and very proud of this policy. I think it covered a lot of really important updating that needed to be done, so thank you. Do we have any public comment on this, JJ?
No.
Do we have a motion? Yes, uh-huh. Dr. Feimster.
I apologize, I was not at the meeting, but I just want to ask a question. Did you guys address, it's not, is that what it's called? The tobacco that you put in? Was that discussed and that is not allowed? Or?
Emily Ellison, for the record. Under the Guiding Practices section, Tobacco and E-Cigarettes talks about our philosophy regarding the use and sale on district property and as part of district activities, and that would include chewing tobacco.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Frankel has a question.
I do, and thank you, President Holland. In looking at this, again, I just was reading one sentence, and it occurred to me that I wanted to make sure I was clear and maybe that the policy was clear. On page two, it is Section 3B, little 3I, prescription medications. And it says, the district, second sentence, "The district prohibits the use and management of prescription medications." And I'm concerned about just the wording of all, it doesn't mean all, it just says including, cannabinoid products, et cetera. But when you say it prohibits the use of prescription medications, it almost sounds like we're saying it prohibits the use of all prescription medications. And I'm sure that there are some prescription medications, be it blood pressure medications or other types of medications, that our employees are taking while they're at work. And I know we're not saying we prohibit all of those. So I'm wondering if we should clarify that in some way.
Just Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think that's a really good distinction from my colleague. For me, because it went on to say unless such use cannot reasonably be accomplished outside of the work hours, to me, I thought that kind of included that. And that may not be clear enough, but that's the way I read that to be. And if you have to take something every four hours, for an example, then it can't reasonably be accomplished outside of, but again, it may need to be clearer, but that's just kind of where I landed. Otherwise, I would have the exact same concern.
When taken as a whole, in the whole phrasing, it certainly makes a difference. Yes, trustee Frankel.
And actually, I considered that, too. I just wanted to make sure that all of us were comfortable with that language, and I just wanted to make that clear on the record, what that paragraph implied. So if we're fine with it in that we believe that it cannot reasonably accomplish outside of work hours suggests and implies that folks who are taking regular medication every four hours or every six hours, as long as they don't fall within those products, and I think that's the thing that I'm not sure about, because there are some products that you take and may need to take, pain medication, for example, that could interfere with work performance and things like that. So I'm just, that's the reason I brought it up.
I personally think we did a good job of sort of threading the needle with that, but I welcome other comments. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a question. It was on 3A, where it says, no staff member may be under the influence of alcohol, and a little later on, at a district-sponsored event. So does that mean, then, that if the school district, let's say there's an event or some dinner or fundraiser at like the Atlantis Casino or the Peppermilk Casino where they're serving wine, does that mean, then, that any district employee that attends that event, if it's sponsored by the district, is not allowed to drink wine at an event like that? Or am I reading it too strictly?
Emily Ellison, for the record. If the employee is representing the district as a part of that event or in their capacity, official capacity, then, no, they should not be.
Well, that's going to cut down on trustee attendance at events. Just kidding, just kidding. Sorry, trustee Frankel, I embarrassed you. I embarrassed us. No, it was a good question, trustee Kelly, because there are staff members throughout the district that are invited to appreciation events and are representing the district. Trustee Feimster.
A great question, because I'm thinking of just an incident that I'm aware of, and I'm sure Stallworth might be aware of it, of a teacher who was supervising a prom. Well, you're inside of one of the nice hotels, and, you know, it's a tough thing, supervising the prom. Well, a teacher decided that they might want to just have a little drink, let's just say one teacher. But it became controversial, so I think it's very important to be very, very, very clear on this. And I guess my follow-up question would be, how are we guaranteeing that teachers are aware of these new changes? That's something that I'm concerned about.
You want to speak to that, Emily and Don?
I'll speak to that. For the record, Don Huckabee, Chief Human Resources Officer. We do post our changes when we make changes to our board policies, and Ms. Curry makes sure that that gets sent out to all of employees as well, so that they are aware. So people should know. We also send it out to folks during the process, so they know that it's coming up and so that they know what the changes are. And that way, if they're interested in having discussions with the Board on it, they know about that, too. So Ms. Curry does a great job of making sure that we get changes out to everyone, and it's posted on the website.
Don, thank you, but I just want to follow up just a little bit. Natha, you're here, and I want to ask you. When you have situations like this that you have to defend, what is it that you say to teachers and to principals? I mean, there has to be a conversation, that has to be held, because we don't automatically say, okay, you're a goner. This was written, you should have been responsible for reading it. So there has to be something else, and I'm just wondering if, you know, go ahead.
Natha Anderson, Washoe Education Association. The first thing we would ask is, how exactly was the information given to the employees? And exactly as Don just stated, having it sent out is very important to have. We would also probably, more than likely with such a change, we would more than likely also put it in possibly one of our newsletters. We would have it possibly as well with one of our, at our kickoff rep council things. And the situation you're speaking of around the proms, I would more than likely also possibly ask my high school, the high school director, because we have our, our Board has different areas that we ask our Board members to contact with. I would ask them also to do probably a little reminder about this sort of policy. So we would make sure that they were aware of it as well, to protect our member beforehand. And this is, again, a change, because if I, if it is okay for me to say this, I want to make sure, President.
I don't know what you're going to say, but go ahead.
Well, hey, I can say whatever I want to. You know, if we have, we have so many members that have children that, you know, they might decide, I'm going to go to dinner, and then I'm going to, I might have a glass of wine, and then I'm going to go see my daughter's play, a sixth-grade play, eighth-grade play, 12th-grade play, whatever the case may be. We have to make sure that that's clear to them as well, that this policy does come into play.
Now, I would, if I could just respond to that, the strict reading of it is, while on district property at a district-sponsored event, or while representing the district as part of a school, district, organization, or team. So this would be anywhere you are, that you are representing the district. I do have a question, because it previously related to impairment. The previous, you can sit down, Natha, yeah, thank you. The previous language referred to, no employee or volunteer shall report for work or work impaired by any substance that is legal or illegal, and impaired means under the influence such that the employee's motor senses or judgment either are or may be reasonably presumed to be affected. This is much broader, because it says under the influence, which refers to, in this reading, any level of consumption of alcohol or a controlled substance by an individual, NyQuil, you know, anything that anybody might have. I'm wondering why the change from impaired to under the influence relating to any level of consumption.
Don Huckabee. I believe that was changed based on the fact that we have no tolerance for the drug and alcohols in a drug-free work environment here. And so if an employee came to work, there was reasonable suspicion, there was a drug test performed, and it came out .01, then you were under the influence. And so that's why I think we are very specific in the language, that it's.
There is certainly a distinction between impaired judgment and any level of consumption. But, yep, superintendent?
I think I have a clarification. In this policy, if I'm an employee, and like we go to Chicago for something, and they go to Wrigley Field after hours, they're not allowed to have a beer?
No, I don't, well, in my opinion.
I just think it needs to be clear to people.
In my opinion, you're not at Wrigley in your official capacity.
Right.
As the superintendent of Washoe County School District. I would say also, if you went and had a glass of wine with dinner and went to your child's play, that you're not in an official capacity as a district employee in that regard, either you're there as a parent. So.
But if you're at lunch, you shouldn't be drinking a beer.
Correct.
Right. Okay, I think it needs to be clarified.
If you are at the prom, I would say, in trustee Feimster's illustration, that example, you're in a district, you are in your role as a supervisor of the prom, that's an official capacity, and in that instance, you should not be drinking.
So at the National School Board Association Conference, we will not have any members of our group who are at an official event having a beer? Is that, that's, they're part of the district organization or team? Is that, is that the reading? I think that's why we're asking, and that was a great question to raise. I don't know who was first. Do you want to go first, Don?
Well, I think for the policy, that everyone should refrain from any kind of alcohol or tobacco, et cetera, if they're in their official capacity. The judgment of what constitutes official capacity, I guess, would have to lie in whatever the situation is.
Mr. Mayor, and then trustee Taylor.
Yeah, you know, I compliment you on this, because these things happen. You know, a team goes down to Las Vegas to play for a championship, and afterwards, they go out to dinner, and some of the volunteers, and I hope it covers them, too, here's the kids, and they're eating a meal after winning the state championship or whatever, and alcohol in front of the kids by volunteers and coaches and stuff, that shouldn't happen. That shouldn't happen. It's common sense, but this right here shows that if somebody complains, it's pretty severe. So I commend you on this policy.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of comments. One, on the prom, I mean, I think that certainly we don't want people drinking at the prom, but they don't serve alcohol at the prom. So if someone's chaperoning the prom, they brought their own. I think that's a different policy. I mean, that's, that's.
The prom was just an example.
Oh, yeah, no, no, but I just mean as a whole, so that, we don't, you certainly cannot bring your own alcohol to a school event. And I think, and I'm going to agree with trustee Mayor, in that I would like to see in the original statement, it did include specifically volunteers, and this one, I don't see where that is, unless I've missed it. So I think we do want to do that. I certainly could have missed that, so, okay, it's their action, thank you. And then the third thing I would say is, first of all, I don't drink. I don't drink at all. However, I think that to say that if someone is at a dinner in town for something, and they're sitting at the table because they're getting an award, or if you're at a conference that you can't have a glass of wine, I think that's a little severe. I mean, I think that, I don't think that that's the intention, because that's what we're saying, is that if you're at any capacity, in any capacity at all, representing the school district, and keep in mind, I don't drink, so it doesn't matter to me personally, that someone cannot have a glass of wine. I think, I don't know if that's what it is that we want to do. That sounds, that sounds like going a little further than we, than I would like to go. But I certainly want to hear from my colleagues on that.
Yes, trustee Frankel.
Well, as I listened to Ms. Huckabee explain the tension, Don, you continue to reiterate the while representing the district as part of, while in that capacity as a district employee. So I don't think that the sentence really makes a distinction between those things, because it does say, if you read the literal sentence, we can't do that if we're at a conference. The parent, who may be a teacher, an employee of the school district, who goes to their child's play after dinner and has had a glass of wine, reading the literal letter of this policy as it's written, because it has or, while representing the district as part of a school, district, organization, or team, I'm wondering if that emphasis on the representation of the school district, because a parent is also a staff person, who is also a staff person, has a child in the school, may not be even the school where they teach, but they're still on district property. And if you're reading this literally, which is what it says, if while on district property... And if you're reading this literally, which is what it says, "if while on district property", and it doesn't say "while at your own school in your own capacity", it says "while on district property or while representing the district in your capacity as an employee." So maybe there is some need to clarify, and I'm not sure how...
In your official capacity, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I certainly, I think that clarity would be good. I think that this, as it's written, and the scenarios that we're all talking about are literally called for in the way that it is written. And perhaps, as you say, "No staffer may be impaired or under the influence of alcohol or a controlled substance while in official capacity, on district property, at a district-sponsored event, or while representing the district as part of a school, district, organization, or team." I think the official capacity piece, because again, a teacher who's a staff member coming to their child's, it would be, it would be an offense according to this. I don't know. Other thoughts? Trustee Kelly?
Yeah, and I would also say just that at a district-sponsored event, I mean, not talking about drugs at all, that's a whole different thing, but just a glass of wine, you know, a glass of beer. I mean, I attended just a couple of weeks ago the WEA Teacher Awards, and to be honest, I liked seeing the teachers having a glass of wine and getting their awards and having fun. And it was at a casino, and so, you know, it's one thing if they had the awards ceremony at one of our schools. Well, then, of course, no alcohol or anything at all. But if you're at a district-sponsored event, but it's at a casino, right at a place where they can serve wine or beer, and we're talking about, you know, adults, to me, that's just, I don't think that's what this policy means to infringe upon, but it does seem to infringe upon. So I would certainly like some clarity before I would want to vote on something like this.
Okay, Superintendent?
So I think we've been working on, like, crafting something, because a lot of questions came up with employees as it relates to when you go to the MLK dinner, do you get to have a glass of wine? A glass of wine is on the table. That means no one in this booth would be drinking wine. So we want to clarify, I think there's some language that we worked on. So could the Chief of Staff come up?
Oh, fine, you were sitting there the whole time with the answer, David.
So, thank you, David Lasik, Chief of Staff, for the record. And just we're kind of tinkering with language to satisfy everybody, but perhaps in that paragraph, we say "while on district property" or "while supervising students" or "while representing the district in their official capacity." So I think the key is, we don't want people who are supervising students to be doing it. And it's not to discourage somebody at an MLK dinner from having a glass of wine. And that kind of takes that away.
It's the "or" and "and" piece, because if you say "while on district property or", you still have that piece of, in the scenario we mentioned before. And I know that's a specific scenario, but it still says "while you're on district property, no matter what the circumstance". So that parent, who's a teacher, who had a glass of wine with dinner and goes to their child's play at seven o'clock, that would be prohibited. So if it doesn't say "and", "on district property in", or maybe just combine it, "while on district property in your capacity, in your official capacity", it's not the "or", it's just blending them together.
How about if we put the official capacity right at the front? "No staff member in his or her official capacity may be impaired or under the influence of alcohol and then all those other things." Would that work? Did you have something you wanted to say, Chief Counsel? He was muttering over here.
He was just muttering.
Okay, okay.
I think it probably should go back to the Policy Committee. I think this should go back to the Policy Committee at this point.
I would agree with that. And that's not a criticism, because I think we are unanimous in our support for this and appreciation for the work that you're doing to refine this. Because as Trustee Mayor said, there are too many instances where we have reports of things that were poor judgment, and we want to make sure that we fix that. So we'll send it back. And do you have enough of our concerns to work with? Okay, I'm seeing nods. Okay, let's have a motion to, yes, refer it back to the Policy Committee. Trustee Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees sends Board Policy 4214, "drugs-free workplace", back to the Policy Committee for further review and editing.
Thank you, okay. And a second by Trustee Frankel. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried, okay. Keep working, because it's really good, and we appreciate it. Yep, it's close, that's right. But I also appreciate my colleagues' attention to the implications and the details, so thank you. Okay, we're going to open 3.05 to 3.09 together. Do we need to take a break? We've been at this for an hour and a half. Sorry, Dr. Green. I know you guys are all ready to go on this, but why don't we take 10 minutes? Or 11 minutes, be back 20, okay? All right, we're in recess until 2:20. We are reconvened as the Board of Trustees, and we are on item 3.05. And again, we are opening 3.05 through 3.09 together so that we can talk about them all together. And here on behalf of staff, Dr. Green and Roland Stallworth and other assorted characters, cast of characters. But we did have a very good, very good presentation on this at the Policy Committee. So gentlemen, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, President. Dr. Byron Green, Chief Student Services Officer, for the record. And we did present this last week at the Board Policy Committee. We just, I want to turn this over to Rollins just a moment, so we can acknowledge the different community organizations that we had the opportunity to work with. But district staff have been working diligently on this for the last several months with the Office of General Counsel, the Deputy Superintendent, the Office of School Leadership and Student Services. And we believe that we have four proposed policies that will address the need, I think, that the board wanted in this regard. So Rollins, could you please just share in regards to who you worked with and gain input with?
Yes, Roland Stallworth, the Director of Activities and Athletics for the Washoe County School District. Yeah, we had a phenomenal committee that was made up of not only my department, but also Kristin McNeil was involved, along with Neil Rombardo, who was a committee member. We also had, Mike Doring was involved, along with, of course, Dr. Green and myself. And included a lot of conversation and communications with not only community members, but also members of organizations, clubs, and those kind of groups throughout the district. And also, Dr. Green mentioned two months. It was actually four months and 13 days. So it was, yeah, who's counting? But it was a, it was a long process. Again, if you remember, if we go back 14, four months and 13 days ago, we brought one policy to you, and that was 5430. You can see now that that policy has changed because of the work that we've done and the involvement we've done with the community members, our schools, and the committee. It's changed really basically into four policies that really get very specific in detail, so we can provide outstanding consistency district-wide from school to school in terms of how we operate and do things.
Thank you.
So with that, we open, obviously, the floor for any questions the trustees may have at this.
Well, one of the highlights for me of the change in policy had to do with a new category called "district-recognized", which took us out of the debate about whether things were sanctioned or not sanctioned, and who should sanction them first. And I really want to applaud the staff, and I also want to thank the community members who were very involved in this. Just as a symbol of that involvement, when we opened it up for public comment at the Policy Committee, we only had one public comment, as opposed to, we probably had 30 or 40 people at the first time this was brought.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, okay. Dozens, dozens of people. But again, we had one comment, and it was from one of the representatives of that group saying, "We appreciate this and we support the policy changes." So I really thank the staff for being flexible and being responsive to the concerns that were raised, so. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. The thing that stood out to me, in addition to what President Simon Holland said, was that the control it gives the schools. It gives the schools the ability to make decisions about how they recognize sports, if they leather, not leather, all of this thing, if there's alternative. It puts all of that in the school, in the hands of the school administration. And I think that's really important, because they all treat it differently, and it means different things to them, and so we aren't involved in that. It still allows them that range of options for them to do what's best for their school and for their kids.
I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from the board? Do we have any public comment, JJ? No public comment. Forty-two to zero, right there, yeah. Well, and that's what good policymaking requires, is involvement of lots of perspectives and responsiveness and flexibility and creativity. So thank you for all of that. So we need to take motions separately on these items, so I would entertain a motion on 3.05 at this time. Dr. Taylor?
Sure, I'll make one. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval for the proposed revision of Board Policy 5300, "student activities and initiates the 13-day public review and comment period."
Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Feimster. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. 3.06, do we have a motion on 3.06? Vice President Raymond?
I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval for the proposed revision of Board Policy 5325, "district-recognized athletics and initiates the 13-day public review and comment period."
Second by Trustee Frankel, motion by Vice President Raymond. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. Item 3.07, do we have a motion? Trustee Kelly?
I move that the Board provide preliminary approval for the proposed adoption of Board Policy 5340, "district-sanctioned interscholastic athletics."
Is there a second? And initiates the...
And initiates the 13-day public review and comment period.
Thank you. Second from Dr. Taylor, motion by Trustee Kelly. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. 3.08, do we have a motion, Trustee Frankel?
I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval for the proposed deletion of Board Policy 5305, "interscholastic activities, athletics, school-sponsored events, and prevention and treatment of sports-related injuries, and initiates the 13-day public review and comment period."
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Feimster. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. And item 3.09, do we have a motion on 3.09? Trustee Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval for the proposed revision of Board Policy 7120, "community use of school facilities and initiates the 13-day public review and comment period."
Okay, motion by Trustee Mayor. Was there a question? Okay, second, do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Dr. Feimster? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Well done, well done, team, thank you. And we even deleted something in all of that, which is... Okay, that takes us to item 3.10, which is discussion and possible action to negotiate, review, and approve the superintendent employment contract between Washoe County School District Board of Trustees and Ms. Tracy Davis. And representing the district, we have invited our external legal counsel, Josh Hicks, and Laura Jacobson, also legal counsel from their firm, to summarize the process that we went through and to go over what is proposed in the contract, to answer your questions, and see what the board's pleasure is. So Mr. Hicks, welcome, and thank you for being patient as we got to this item.
Thank you, Madam President. Josh Hicks, for the record. With Laura Jacobson as well. We're attorneys at McDonnell Corona. And we're very pleased to be here today to present to you what we've come up with, along with the superintendent, for a new contract of employment. I'd like to make a few preliminary comments before getting into the contract itself. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the steps we took before we got here today. These include the steps of our initial work on this, our, the other kinds of contracts that we reviewed, both superintendents and other local public CEO-type positions. And then I'd like to go ahead and summarize the contract for you and then open up for any questions. So several months ago, when we started this process, as you know, we met with each of the trustees individually, and we discussed the current contract of employment. And we appreciate the time you all spent with us. That was very helpful to us to understand how you viewed the current contract, which helped us start thinking about what a new contract might look like that may be amenable to the board. After that, what we did is we spent a pretty good amount of time going out and reviewing the prior contracts of the superintendents. So we went all the way back to 2004 with Paul Dugan, and that's the spreadsheet that you have in front of you, it's on the system as well. We really went into a lot of the details about what was in those early contracts, what was in Superintendent Morrison's contract, what was in Martinez, Superintendent Martinez's contract, and then what was in Superintendent Davis's contract. And it gives you a good idea of how things have somewhat evolved over the years in terms of what's in and out of those contracts. And that really gave us a good understanding of where things have gone and how things have changed over the years. On top of that, we went out and did a comprehensive survey of all the other local government CEO-type positions and looked at their contracts. And again, the idea was to just see what kind of terms and conditions are typical, what might be atypical. And just to give you a list of some of those that we looked at, we looked at the Washoe County Manager, the Reno City Manager, the Sparks City Manager, the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority, Regional Transportation Commission, the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, Truckee River Flood Management Authority, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, Truckee Meadows Community College, Desert Research Institute, UNR, College of Southern Nevada, UNLV, and the most recent, kind of late in the game, but the Clark County Superintendent's Contract. Those, all of that work that we put together on those was very helpful in terms of being prepared to discuss a future contract of employment. And I think it was helpful to all parties involved to know what is, what is common in those contracts and what might not be so common in those contracts. In addition to that, we also looked at the several other salary rankings for superintendents, and we were really trying to look at comparably sized school districts to see what kind of salary levels you might expect. In that regard, we looked at the 2016 Superintendent's Salary and Benefits Study published by the School Superintendents Association in February of 2017. We looked at the Eighth Survey and Report of the Council of the Great City Schools of Urban School Superintendents. That was in fall 2014. And then we also looked at a survey of the superintendent base pay for like-sized school districts that was prepared by the Washoe County School District staff, and we very much appreciate all the time and effort that they put into those. That definitely helped us see what kinds of salary ranges you might expect in a school district that's about the size of Washoe County. We're pleased to report that the base pay that we came up with in this contract really is pretty typical of what you see in comparably sized school districts. So with all that information, and a significant amount of work, time, and effort went into preparing all that, but like any kind of preparation, it pays off when you actually get down to doing some of the work. We spent some time going through various versions of the contract and going back and forth, as you would expect in any kind of negotiation process. I want to thank Superintendent Davis. She made some significant concessions to get this contract approved. I want to thank her attorney, Ann Morgan, from Fenway Craig, who is very professional to work with throughout this process. And of course, I want to thank President Holland and Trustee Taylor and Superintendent Davis. At the end, they really got together and finished up a few of the sticking points that were still remaining to get us here today. So with that said, I'm going to move on to a summary of some of the salient key points in the new contract. And the document I'm going to be working off of is the document on McDonnell Corona Letterhead, dated today, that you should all have. We sent it over earlier today. There's comments in the back for anyone in the public who wanted to take a look at that as well. It's on Board Ducks. Yeah. So with that said, this is the June 12th one. It's on McDonnell Corona Letterhead, if you're taking a look at it. And what we did in this summary was we took the old contract, the one that's expiring, and we assumed if it was simply renewed for another three years, what that would cost the district versus what the new contract would cost the district over the next three years. And that's kind of the comparison that we did, because that was really the baseline, was what if you just renewed the existing contract for another three years? What would that look like compared to this? So, you can see in this spreadsheet, we put together a few key terms. You can see the term itself. The old contract is a three-year term. The new contract is two years with a one-year option. And I'll get into that option a little bit more, but I'm just going to summarize a few of these key terms for you. The base salary, the old contract started at two hundred and thirty-eight thousand per year, and then it went up because of some salary increases and ended up at two hundred and seventy-five thousand, five fourteen seventy-five, as of December two thousand and seventeen. The new contract has no salary, none of those salary increases. So, the new contract just stays flat during the term at two seventy-five, five fourteen seventy-five. And the only thing that actually will increase the salary in the new contract are any COLAs that go out to any of the other administrators. So, the salary increases, the next tab, you can see that one at five percent per year. And those actually rolled into the salary as well. So, it wasn't not just a bonus, even though in the old contract, it was termed a bonus, but it was not applied that way. It was actually rolled in and the salary increased each year. That is not in the current contract. And if you look at the savings you would see over three years on that, that's about sixty-five thousand dollars and some change. The performance bonus, the current contract, that was up to ten percent per year. Discretionary at the Board, the new contract has it up to fifteen percent per year, and at least five percent of that is mandatory if certain performance indicators are met in the evaluation, and I'll get into that a little bit more in just a minute. The insurance coverage for the superintendent and dependents is the same as in other prior contracts, so there are no different savings there. The deferred comp and the PERS contribution are the same as well. I will highlight for you, the PERS service credit was another concession from the superintendent. In the current contract, the one that's expiring, the school district buys a third of a year credit each year. The new contract does not have that, and that savings is around seventy-seven thousand dollars over the three years. The vehicle allowance, the current contract has eight hundred dollars a month, plus a mileage reimbursement for travel outside of Washoe County. The new contract has eight hundred dollars per month with no mileage reimbursement. The vacation and sick accruals, what we did with both of these was aligned them more with what the administrators see than what was in there just for the superintendent before. So, under the expiring contract, vacation accrued at twenty-five days per year with a hundred days max accrual. Under the new contract, it accrues at twenty days per year with sixty-three days max accrual. That's important, because under either contract, any accrued and unused vacation leave at the end of the contract is paid out. So, the savings on that one could be up to about forty thousand dollars, which is just dependent on how much vacation is actually accrued. The sick leave accrual, we also, there were also some changes made there. Under the current contract, it accrues at fifteen days per year with two hundred and fifty days max accrual, and fifty percent of those are payable at the end of the contract. Under the current, the new contract, it accrues also at fifteen days per year and also at two hundred and fifty days max accrual, but twenty-five percent instead of fifty percent of the unused days are payable at the end of the contract. And I'd also point out footnote four has a little bit more explanation there, because the superintendent had a pretty significant amount of days accrued already. So, in order to address that, we reached an agreement that there would be a one-time buyout of thirty point five days of the sick leave, which would then adjust at the end, and some of that would be banked to the end and paid out there as well. The net result, either way, is really about the same, because the district would be paying out that sick leave if the current contract expired anyways. Again, this is what the actual savings to the district is, would be dependent upon how much is accrued and paid out, but it could be up to over sixty-six thousand dollars on this piece as well. And finally, the annual vacation payout, the current contract allows a superintendent to cash out fifteen days per year of accrued and unused vacation leave. The new contract allows fifteen days per year cash buyout in this first year, and then seven days in years two and three. That saves some money for the district, too. That's about sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. So, if you look at the total on there, again, some of it depends on how much of the accruals are, but it's according to our calculations, the total savings to the district are anywhere from one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents to two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety... two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and eleven cents. Now, just to expand on a couple of those terms, instead of just the dollars and cents, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the performance bonus. I mentioned that earlier. The prior contract was a ten percent per year discretionary bonus, and that was, to our understanding, never actually awarded. The new contract, it is between, it is up to a fifteen percent bonus, and if the superintendent will be entitled to at least a five percent bonus if she meets, if she meets expectations, minimum expectations on goals and metrics that are established by the superintendent and the Board. So, that's some work that you will all have to do to set those goals and metrics, but we thought that was a fair thing to have everyone knowing what is expected, and if those goals and metrics are met, at least a minimum bonus of five percent is awarded. And it could be higher if there's exemplary performance in the eyes, in the view of the Board.
Josh, can I just add a point to that? And that is, goals and metrics have been established by the Board for the years of our strategic plan. What we have not completely finished, the Board started when we talked about the superintendent's evaluation process in our public workshop, what we did not complete was how do those various goals and metrics rank, or how are they weighted in relation to one another? So, you know, if she meets ninety percent is at this, but only twenty percent on another one, so that's the work that we still have to do in determining what constitutes, together, all of us, what constitutes meets expectations. But just so the members of the public know, those metrics and those goals do exist, and they are published on our strategic plan. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, now, this goes, starts July first.
Yes.
So, she'll be evaluated a half a year by Veronica and myself, and half a year by someone else, right?
Well, as is noted in this, the annual evaluation that covers the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen school year takes place in, between November first and December thirty-first of next year. So, you all will be evaluating her performance for this year, and then her performance in the... Because we wait until all the fiscal graduation rate, all of the metrics are completed, that doesn't happen until September and October of the following year.
Okay, so, the terms of this agreement says she'll get a third year if the evaluation's satisfactory.
Correct.
Who, which evaluation are we talking about?
So, the second year evaluation is, would be done in November of twenty...
Twenty.
Twenty twenty. And it would cover the results from the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, or student year, I'm sorry. So, those would be newly elected, two newly elected trustees would be participating.
You said two thousand and eighteen?
Nineteen.
The evaluation would take place in two thousand and twenty, covering the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year.
Okay, so, I'll be here for half of that?
No.
Twenty eighteen?
You're here for the conduct of the year, but the evaluation would be taking place the following year, because we have to wait until all the metrics and all the results are, and all the data is available, and that will be in two thousand and twenty.
Well, I think...
I'm sorry, you're right, you're right. Two thousand and nineteen, November of two thousand and nineteen, you're right, you're right. For the eighteen, nineteen school year.
So, it's the next ones that are elected.
Yes.
Yes. Because you've done the evaluation, we did the evaluation for last year, and then the evaluation of this year's performance, this two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, you will be here for.
Yeah.
So, you'll do that evaluation appropriately.
But that doesn't count on the third year.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That's as proposed. I'm sorry I interrupted you, Josh.
That's all right, President, thank you. And to trustee mayor's point, the last year, the evaluation has to occur before June thirtieth, and that's because the contract expires on June thirtieth in the third year. Or potentially the second year, if it's not, if it's not triggered, if the renewal's not triggered. And to that point, the third-year option, which is in the summary as well, that is triggered if that evaluation for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year is at least at a meets expectations level. It says satisfactory in this memo, it's actually meets expectations, is what's in the contract.
So, now on the evaluation, you're pushing the date to evaluate her up to June.
In the final year.
Because it's November and December, but in the future, it's going to be at the end of the school year.
Well, it just has to be by the end of June, because that's when it's going to expire. It could be done earlier.
Exactly. And that's only for the final year.
For the final year. So, next year, it's still going to be November.
That's correct. Just a few other final comments, and then I'll open it up for any general questions. As I mentioned, the sick and vacation and health benefits, that all now aligns with what the administrators get, and we felt that was, that was an important concession as well to be made, and that's a good piece for future consistency, for future contracts as well. Finally, the COLA, the base salary, the only way it can actually be adjusted throughout the term of this contract is if there's a COLA adjustment. So, when those happen during the term, the base salary will be adjusted, but the bonus, the performance bonus itself, is truly a bonus, it is just a one-time bonus, it does not actually impact the base salary level. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions. I think those were the key terms in the contract itself, but if you have any other questions on it, I'm happy to stand for those.
Thank you so much, Josh. And Laura, thank you for all the research that you did. I want to thank the staff as well that answered lots of questions and pursued lots of really good information. I really want to thank superintendent Davis for volunteering to give up substantial personal compensation, and just really applaud her for that. I think, if I might speak for trustee Taylor and myself, we wanted, in representing the district in these negotiations, we wanted to do several things. One, we wanted to establish a package, a compensation package, that would be appropriate no matter who the superintendent is, from a policy standpoint. So, things like having a salary that is at the national average for districts our size, having equity with other employee groups within the organization, and having sense of equitable compensation features with other public sector CEOs in our region and our state. So, those were some of our goals, and really, again, thank everybody for working on this, and would open it up for questions at this point.
I hate to keep harping on this, but on this one page where it says third-year option, it says the third year of the contract is triggered if the superintendent receives at least a satisfactory evaluation for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. So, I will have been here for half that time. So, my evaluation is not really an evaluation, because you're going to take the evaluation in June, unless you call me to do half of it.
We would have it in November of the two thousand and nineteen, when all of the information is readily available, but...
But it covers time that I'm, and Veronica have been on the Board, and it doesn't seem that somebody that comes in for six months evaluates it, and my, and Veronica's don't get to evaluate for the six months that we were there.
That's the same thing that happened when Dr. Feimster and I and trustee Raymond were elected, and trustee Kelly coming back. It's part of the nature of the election cycle, that we don't have those, we don't have the performance metrics. And again, one of the things we all did together was to take it out of being a subjective process and to relate it to those objective measures that are things like what were the rates of remediation, and what were the graduation rates, and what were the grade-level proficiency metrics? So, it's not about, it's not about personal relationships or so much about that anymore. It's about, did the metrics get...
But the thing is, I was elected to evaluate the superintendent, so the last six months of my term, I don't get to evaluate the superintendent.
Well, what we might be able to do is provide an opportunity for you all to, you know, before you leave, to share your thoughts and to provide input to that evaluation. I think that's fine.
And that would count in the trigger, the trigger of the superintendent.
Well, again, they're, it's based on the performance of the metrics that we all agreed to.
Yeah.
So, did they, did those, did they get performed or not?
Yeah. And that's the point measures and all that.
Right, that was why we went to that, so it was not so much about individual perception.
But what I'm saying is, my points don't count unless the person that takes my place and the person that takes Veronica, they get half of a year, and we get half of a year for that evaluation, the point totals. You understand what I'm saying?
I do, I absolutely do, and would absolutely welcome your completing an evaluation before you leave. I think that's a, you know, that's an important and valuable part of the input, just welcome it.
So, New Year's Eve, I'll deliver it to you personally.
That's right, you and I will have a date, yeah. We'll have a date, like all of our dates at the JROTC.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just going to say that, you know, allowing trustee Frankel and trustee mayor, just as you said, to chime in, maybe it should be a practice that we have as we go forward and consistently, because one of the things that, as you mentioned, we worked really hard for us, is to come up with a contract, and it should even be a review system that can be applied across the Board. And so, maybe that's something we really can put something together as we put together our evaluation process for those folks that are going out, still get a voice for that six months somehow, and that those, you know, they're still weighed in.
I certainly, I'm only one trustee, but I would welcome that.
Yeah, I support that as well.
Other questions?
Questions?
Yes, Dr. Feimster.
Thank you, Madam President. How much do we say the savings was for Washoe County School District on Tracy's contract?
Trustee Feimster, Josh Hicks, for the record.
Yes, Josh, I'm sorry.
We laid that out in this memo, so you can see it broken down both by contract, by item, and by term in there, and by total.
It's on the second page of that document you have in your right hand there.
I just want it, I want it heard, is what I'm saying.
Sure. And again, just to be clear, this was a comparison of the new contract versus if the old contract were simply renewed for another three years. That's how we came up with this. And the total savings to the district is between one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents, and two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and eleven cents. And really, the discrepancy in that range is because it depends on how much leave would have been accrued and bought out at the end of the contract. That's why it goes to those levels.
I can't read this, because my eyes aren't that good, but I just want to ask a question. How much did previous superintendents save the district? It might be here, but I really can't see it. I truly can't.
I trust you.
I need a magnifying glass, I don't think I can see it.
I apologize for the font.
No, that's okay, no, no.
In the battle between efficiency of putting it all in one place and font size.
No, I know, but I'm just wondering, since, you know, because sometimes we remember things that we write, and I was just, I'm wondering if you recall just a ballpark figure as to how much previous superintendent's contracts saved us by giving up this, forfeiting this, working on this, tweaking this, tweaking that? I'm just wondering.
We, trustee Feimster, that is not in this spreadsheet, and we did not do a financial analysis of the prior contracts. We were really looking at the terms. But it did seem to me that what you saw for most of these contracts was more of an expansion and more costs to the district. and more cost to the district than less, but we did not do a specific dollar figure on that.
So, I mean, not even a ballpark figure?
No, but your finance office may have those.
Okay, well, I would, is there a way that I could get that information from Mark? Not tonight, of course, but I wish I could have had it tonight, I really do.
I would have to agree with Josh, that, that based on the evidence that's provided here, we do not see other superintendents having voluntarily given up features of their compensation package. And again, that's, that was our huge thanks to trustee, or to Superintendent Davis.
And that's a tough thank you. And I appreciate, like everyone else, I appreciate, and I commend Tracy for being so benevolent. If you look at what's going on in society today, women are always, I mean, we're trying to move ahead, we're trying to get contracts that are commensurate with males, we're trying very hard. And I admire the women who are out there on the front lines fighting. And to me, I, what I see here is a, you know, take ten steps backwards, oh gladly, that's what I see. And I have not discussed this contract or seen it, because whenever I met with you in January, or whenever it was, that's the last time I saw it, or went over things, I should say. And I guess I'm disappointed on behalf of women. My two daughters were here recently, one left this morning, one left Sunday, and they're in tough positions. But I could tell you, I had conversations with them that was about women, just about women, one from New York, one in Miami. I am so proud of them for sticking up for themselves. And, you know, they said, "Mom, what we did is we just, you know, we always thought of you," and just thinking that you would always want things to be fair, fair, and not step back because, because a male is in front of them, or think that a male could get a job over them. My daughters, I didn't raise them that way, I just said, "You, you're competing with yourself." And I have a feeling in my gut that we're not making women proud of us. I feel that, I feel that women have gone through a lot, especially in Washoe County School District. We have gone through a lot. I don't know if there was a time when women made less than men, I don't know, but I would guess that probably there was a time that that happened. I could tell you that there was a time when females were not promoted to positions in Washoe County, due to the fact that they were females. You're looking at one of them. I was told that I had, I should probably look at being an elementary principal, because I didn't, I didn't appear to be a middle school principal. I worked my way up, I kept finding, I worked my way up. It was tough. I'm human. I worked harder than a lot of the males, but yet males kept getting jobs ahead of me. And those, I feel that I paid that price for my daughters. I hope that when I look around, and look at all the females who are in positions in Washoe County School District right now, and, you know, looking at Kristen, I'm so, I'm so proud of you, I'm so proud of you. And the work that you do is exemplary, and I applaud you for that. But had you not had people behind you saying that, yes, Kristen is capable of this, we probably would not have known about the impeccable work that you are, that you do. And I know that you're compensated appropriately, and thank God for that. I just hope that, that .5 year, I hope that that means something. To me, it doesn't mean anything, and I'll tell you why. You mentioned, Josh, that we're trying to get things in alignment, oh, we got the sick days aligned with the teachers, we got the, whatever different areas you mentioned. And I think that's great. Well, imagine saying to a teacher, "We're going to evaluate you again in January, and see if, December, and see if you're available or qualified to come back in January." That would not do students any good whatsoever, whatsoever. And any teacher who is in here could assure you of that. Of course, we, there are times we get lucky, and there are great teachers that come in, especially when we have women who, you know, are pregnant and have to have their kids, but it's tough to get out there and find a substitute to finish off that contract. You want to be involved in that. You want, in any, you know, illness of any sort. We want the best, we want the best.
Trustee Feimster, can I just, I want to respond to some of your points.
Go ahead.
And just want to say, Trustee Taylor and I were very mindful of making sure that we honored the superintendent in this, in this discussion. And just, just so that we do have the factual record, regardless of gender, the salary of $275,514 is right at the average for national salaries for men and women, for superintendents of districts our size. And, and we also recognized that Superintendent Davis is the highest paid salary for a local public CEO, public sector CEO, as she should be, because she has the largest, you know, she's the largest employer. That doesn't include state folks, like, you know, the UNLV president, and the N.C. chancellor, and those kind of folks. So as to females, we were very interested in making sure that was equitable, and reflective of a non-gender comparison, that this is based on facts, and it's based on equity. So, you know, I want to make sure that that is said. And, again, it's a two-year contract with an automatic renewal, based on meeting expectations, which is a satisfactory performance, and I think we all have every confidence that that will be met. I'm certain that the superintendent is confident that she'll meet those expectations, and the staff. And I would, I would.
Madam President, I'm confident too. I just think it sends a signal that is, it's a weakened signal. Like, you think you have the confidence, but maybe you don't. I don't, that's what it says to me. I have the confidence. Let me just keep going with just one more area of where we want consistency. We're looking at moving our sixth graders to middle school. I will be the first person to let you know that, that is, that is phenomenal, I think that is exciting. I haven't been a middle school principal, I think it's so important to have students for three years. You can work with students, and you can accomplish a lot with having kids at sixth, seventh, and eighth. But that one year, even when kids leave at a half year, I would sit and beg parents, can you just, you know, give us just that other six months, is there something you can do? I took home two students myself, to live with us, so that they could have those extra months in that setting, to finish with students that they knew, teachers that they knew, and an environment that they knew, because I knew they would be more productive, I knew they would be more successful, and they are. One student is currently a teacher at, oh, sorry, trainer middle school, in the area of math. Because I took her in, I wanted her to finish, I just, I would like to have a discussion about a half of a year. I just, I, I don't know whether I'm, I feel confident that the research that I did addresses three, four, and five years. I didn't see any .5. Nothing triggering, now, there may have been one or two, but I could tell you, that was in like, a little small town where they knew everyone, and I don't want to look at their research, I want to look at like districts, because I think that's important.
And the like districts, where those, the primary comparison that's available in national data is the student population, the size of the district. Trustee Taylor, you wanted to say something?
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Trustee Taylor, and then Trustee Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. What I wanted to say is a couple of things, is it's, the proposal before us, that I think all of us worked, worked hard to, to put together, is a negotiation that everybody gave, gave some and got some, but I will certainly just reinforce the fact that Superintendent Davis gave a lot, in light of, you know, recognizing the budget situation that we're in, and all of our, all of our commitment to eliminating the deficit and so on, so I certainly want to, want to say that. But it isn't a two-and-a-half-year proposed contract, it's a two-plus-one proposed contract. And I do think a half a year would be kind of weird, I do want to agree with you, with you, Dr. Feimster.
It's weird.
It would be kind of weird, but there isn't, there isn't a half year in this. It's a, it's a, it's a two plus, there's no half, there's no half year in this, it's a two with the potential for another year, based upon, based upon satisfactory progress, and it's automatic. And we get to determine as a board, it's an automatic satisfactory on the evaluation, there's a year, not a half year at all. So I would agree with you, there's no half year in this, at all. And we considered every possibility, you know, that there is, and that was one that certainly was considered, but we thought what would be much more fair is a two with another year automatic, was just really doing what the district has been, has been doing. And part of the rollback, I mean, as a, as a, as a woman, I don't want to do anything that disadvantages or disparages women at all, I just want to commend Superintendent Davis for being willing to say, hey, if I, and rolling back some of these things, it makes me comparable, not less comparable, it makes me comparable to my colleagues, and it's what's good for the district. And that's, that's how we landed there, she didn't have to, I got to tell you, as we started talking, especially about the financial things, that was actually the easiest part of this negotiation. It was the easiest part of this negotiation, I mean, so for people, you know, and people say all kinds of things, and so on and so forth, it's the, it was the easiest financial negotiation you would ever think at this level. And I again, just want to commend Superintendent Davis for being willing to do that. So just to clear up some things, it's, it's not a half year floating, and I do expect this, there's definitely be a, go from two years to three years, with the kind of progress that she's consistently made.
Trustee Mayor.
Yes, well, I'm looking at this sheet that you gave us, and I see all these columns in the variances. I don't see one, one of those numbers, an increase. They're all decreases in parentheses and so forth, none of them went up. She's given a lot, what did we give her?
We gave her a cost of living adjustment, which she didn't have before. We gave her an automatic 5% bonus, based on those, meeting the expectations that the board and the superintendent have agreed on the strategic plan. And we're also giving her payment for 30 days of unused sick leave that she had earned and accrued, which she otherwise wouldn't get until she terminated.
So you're giving, you're giving her what she already earned.
But she doesn't get, she wouldn't have gotten it until she, until she terminated.
But she would have gotten it.
She would have gotten it, and that's why we're giving it to her, but she gets cost of living adjustment, and she gets an automatic 5% bonus, and she's never gotten a bonus before. She's, she's had the opportunity and never been given. So we said, yes, we will make an automatic.
Did you refuse your bonus last year, or did you, how did that work?
You know, we have budget considerations in our district, and we will probably continue to have budget considerations, and as a consideration of our budget woes, I declined the bonus.
Okay, thank you.
She also declined the budget the year before.
Thank you.
So, and what this does is make it automatic, just based upon performance at the 5% level, the board can actually do whatever else you want to, up to 15%. So this, this does give something, that is not a magic, I mean, but I have to be honest with you. I mean, if you want to compare what she gave up to what she get, there's a big variance. And that's why I can't say enough to show appreciation and respect for the leadership that she's shown, for what's best for the district. There is, it is, it's a big gap between what she gave up and what she received, so there's no question about that.
I hope that the newspaper and the TV realize that as much as I do, and you do, because it's going to be news, this contract's going to be news, and I sure hope that they look at this and say, boy, Tracy Davis gave up this because of the hard economic times of the district. Because you're right, what she gave up's here, and what she got's here. And, and I hope it doesn't say, Tracy Davis earned this much money, blah, 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 blah. I hope it says that Tracy Davis gave up more for the good of the district, just like she said. I just hope that's reported, because numbers, you can juggle them any way you want, but you're absolutely right, up here, down here.
I also hope, Madam President, if you don't, I also hope that.
And then to Trustee Frankel.
I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I also hope that the media recognizes that, I don't believe any other superintendent in Washoe County School District has ever given up any raise that was offered to them. Not one. And to break that down, you would say, I think you're the second female superintendent? Am I correct?
In modern history, yeah.
Let's just say the second, because I don't know of anyone else. And again, I just feel that what we're, we're just sending that signal that women sacrifice. We don't, you know, we give up all this stuff, and that we're not worthy of what men are worthy of. That's the signal that I see, that's the signal that I feel. I also know that, on the flip side of that, all of us, I respect all of my colleagues, because I know each one of us care about students, and we're putting the students first, and I know that is first and foremost, and I commend each and every one of you, I, and I love each one of you for that, because I could not serve on a board where, a school board, where I felt that students were not being put first. And I just hope that this is something that, I hope that this is something that Tracy is comfortable with, deep down inside, deep down inside. I am not comfortable with it. I wished we had, Josh, I know you mentioned that you did do some comparisons with other districts, but did you speak personally to female superintendents and ask them how much they gave back due to budget shortfalls in their districts? Because I think it's so important to ask the poignant question, because that's what it's all about.
Trustee Feimster, Josh Hicks, for the record, in all the reviews we looked at of what other superintendents were paid, we actually had no idea if it was males or females, it wasn't broken down that way, it was just superintendents for those districts, so I don't know how it went down gender-wise.
And I would just like to say that there's no implication of gender in what we did, it was, at least from my perspective, and I believe I can speak for Trustee Taylor as well, that, and for Superintendent Davis, that our commitment was to do the right thing for the district at this time. And certainly, you know, as a former public sector CEO, you know, I gave up 40% of my income during the recession, you know, these are the things we do for the good of the organization. So I appreciate your comment that quite often, you're right, Trustee Feimster, that it is women who do recognize that a sacrifice needs to be made, but that doesn't mean women who do recognize that a sacrifice needs to be made, but that doesn't mean we think less of women. It means that we should think more of them for putting the organization first. Vice President Raymond and then trustee Frankel.
Absolutely. I just want to concur before you say it, yeah.
Dr. Feimster, I totally agree with you and I think you're making strong points about that, looking at it that way. And I, as a proud feminist and raising my daughter to be a feminist, I, you know, I think that those are important points. And I almost had like the opposite reaction. My reaction was that only a female leader would think of the greater picture, the whole community. And I think what we have seen here from this evidence, and I'm not trying to bash previous superintendents or trustees on this board, but we got out of whack as a district. The compensation, the, you know, contracts were out of whack with other districts and with other CEOs in public positions in our community. And I am so pleased to, you know, know that our superintendent, who I think not coincidentally is a female, saw that and was willing to make those changes to get us in line. And I am going to just take a quick moment now to thank everyone involved, but also our president and Dr. Taylor for all the time that they spent on this and for representing us. I am so pleased to see the end result. I wish, you know, that we had a different budget situation in our district where we could stay at that level that we were, but like I said, when I saw the package as it was presented, I was just proud that, you know, we, as a group, were able to recognize that we needed to get in line and I am just thankful to Superintendent Davis for seeing that as well. Thank you.
Trustee Frankel.
Thank you, President Holland. And I too would like to thank you and trustee Dr. Taylor, our legal team, and Superintendent Davis for all the work on this contract. And I'd like to preface this by saying that the comments I'm going to make that may sound like they're suggestions in no way disrespects the work that went on in the negotiation. Not having been part of that, I can't necessarily appreciate it. This is the first time we as a board have had the opportunity to discuss it and share our perspectives. So I'd like to share mine and I'm going to focus my comments. I have lots of hats and lenses that I look at, including the feminist lens, but my lens today is going to focus on my two primary responsibilities as a trustee. Fiscal oversight of the district and oversight and evaluation of the superintendent's performance. And I've written my comments in the interest of time and clarity and just given where my brain is, many of you know I had an injury last week, so I've written it out. So looking through the fiscal lens first, a few years, three years ago, I voted against the current contract based on my concerns about the appropriateness and the sustainability of the salary and benefits package that we offered at that time, especially during a time of growing concern about budgetary deficits. I believed at that time, and I still believe to this day, that we as board members may have failed to demonstrate our fiduciary responsibility in approving that contract. I am very pleased that the current proposed contract rectifies many of what I believe to be problematic provisions in the current contract. It removes the purchase of extra per service credit. It eliminates the misnamed annual longevity bonus, which was in actuality a 5% increase in the base salary, which has led to, as you demonstrated, a 15% increase in base salary over the past three years during a time of financial hardship for the district. And the proposed contract appropriately aligns sick leave and vacation accruals along with many of the other fringe benefits with that of other district administrators and leadership. With these and other changes, I believe that the current contract is much more in line with what should be offered to a superintendent in this district, in this community at this time. It makes an important and responsible step toward what I refer to as fiscal rightsizing of a significant contract and expense for the district, which I am pleased to see. While looking at this proposal, I also considered my responsibility as a trustee in relation to setting expectations for and evaluating the performance of the superintendent. This consideration frames a few of the comments I'd like to make regarding the term of the proposed contract and the automatic extension and bonus provisions, as you've outlined. In my initial meeting with Laura and Josh, I expressed my interest in continuing the employment agreement with Ms. Davis for a period of one year, after which the contract could be extended and the superintendent's performance could be evaluated at that point and we could determine whether to continue that contract. And I'd like to explain why I think one year with the opportunity to extend is appropriate. Both of Ms. Davis's performance evaluations in the fall of 2016 and the fall of 2017 identified a number of areas for performance improvement and opportunities for improvement, most significantly in the skill areas of organizational leadership and collaborative leadership. As the trustees will recall, in the 2017 survey that we conducted as part of that year's evaluation process, we received input from more than 1,200 participants, including district staff, teachers, administrators, and members of the community. The input received, which I don't want to overlook or ignore, suggested a decline from 2016 to 17 in the superintendent's performance in the majority of the competency areas that we were evaluating at that time, especially among school staff and administrators. Throughout this past school year, I have visited all 46 of my schools in my district. And in many of my conversations with staff, teachers, and administrators, these conversations have reinforced some of the concerns that were raised in the 2017 survey, especially regarding organizational leadership, collaborative leadership, around communication, decision-making, et cetera. As you know, this is not the first time I have expressed my perspective about the importance of these leadership areas. I brought them up regularly in our evaluation conversations. And I impressed upon you my concerns about their impact on organizational health, organizational performance, employee retention, student success. And this perspective about the importance of these areas has been echoed by the consultant with whom we've been working on the evaluation since last year. And while we have identified new measures to evaluate the superintendent's performance going forward, I am pleased that we have also retained measures related to organizational and collaborative leadership, including survey questions, so that we will have the opportunity to evaluate progress in those areas. And I believe that we should wait to see growth in these areas of leadership, as well as other key measures of student achievement, which our district needs and deserves prior to approving a longer-term contract. I'd also like to comment on the provisions involving automatic actions, specifically the one-year automatic extension of a contract after two years should the superintendent meet expectations, and the automatic five-year bonus, again, should the superintendent meet expectations. From my perspective, hiring, setting expectations for, monitoring and evaluating the superintendent are among the most important, if not the most important responsibilities and obligations of us as elected school trustees. Therefore, I believe strongly that any actions related to hiring, contract extension, evaluation, salary adjustments, or bonuses should be made deliberately, intentionally, and transparently by the board. In my view, it is critical that the board retain and demonstrate its obligation and responsibility to make these decisions through transparent deliberation before the public, rather than adopt any automatic processes that deprive us and the public of that opportunity. Therefore, I would respectfully suggest that we remove the automatic contract extension provision, as well as any automatic entitlement to a bonus based on a particular performance rating. This leads me to two final comments about the referenced performance rating. Again, the performance, the contract requires mandates, to use Josh's word, a one-year extension after two years and a 5% annual bonus if the superintendent meets expectations on the adopted goals and objectives. While we have made significant strides toward clarifying these measurable goals and objectives that we will use to evaluate the superintendent's performance, as President Holland mentioned, that work has not been finished and we are still not clear on the rating categories and how the identified performance measures will be evaluated within those rating categories. I'm not sure we even agreed to use rating categories, despite my suggestion that we do so in alignment with the statewide performance evaluation framework for school administrators, much less to know what we're going to call those rating categories, as it meets or exceeds emerging, accomplished, distinguished, minimally effective, effective, highly effective. Until we have clarified and identified what those rating categories are, and more importantly, clarified how those ratings will be determined, I think it would be unwise to reference in this contract any type of automatic action, a trigger, related to a performance rating. Therefore, I would suggest, given where we are now, the contract leave those determinations to the sole discretion of the board and we can revisit that if we so choose, once we've clarified those. I believe in clarifying them first before putting them in a contract. And finally, I believe that should a bonus be offered to the superintendent or any other district employee, it should come as recognition for exceeding expectations, rather than simply meeting expectations. In most of the organizations I've been a part of or worked with, bonuses are offered for going above and beyond, not just performing one's duties, especially in an era of financial belt tightening by all, and when others in the organization are not eligible to receive increases in salary or benefits. And in fact, as we heard from Ms. Anderson earlier today, may be asked to sacrifice more. So those are some of my comments and I appreciate the indulgence to allow me to share my thoughts.
Thank you, trustee Frankel. And I would add that part of the reason for giving the opportunity for an automatic 5% bonus based on performance is that that is more consistent with what other employees do receive. If they last another year and they perform their duties, they do get a pay increase, a step increase unless they're at the top of their range. I wanted to ask trustee Kelly, since you haven't said anything yet, I just wanted to give you an opportunity and then I saw Dr. Taylor's light on next.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I guess first I have a question about the contract itself. I mean, I feel that some of the points that trustee Frankel made were valid, especially on the one-year, the automatic one-year increase of the term. We have this contract here, I mean, if we wanted to make, as a board, if we wanted to make a change, a tweak, or anything like that, what's the, what would be the process if the board approved it? What would be the process? Will we then have to do a special meeting, a special session to look at the contract again? Or could we make that change now if it was voted on? How does that work?
It's a negotiation. It's agendaized for a negotiation today, so, you know, we can vote on changes today. I will add that it has to be completed by June 30th. So trustee Taylor?
Yes, Madam President. I want to do, one, I'd like to make a motion, but just before I do, I would like to address the concerns shared by a couple of my colleagues and certainly well-stated in your concussion status that you were in. I just want to remind my colleagues that this is a negotiation. And of the couple of things that you have concerns about, they don't measure up to the numerous things that trustee, that Superintendent Davis gave. And when you have a negotiation, there is some give and take. And there's not a whole lot of, there wasn't a whole lot of take from Superintendent Davis's standpoint. So, you know, in a contract, it is never going to be everything somebody wants when you have to negotiate with eight people. And so although I certainly understand concerns, because I have honesty, I mean, there's some things that I gave and take and we gave and took all the time. And at the end of the day, the three of us sat down on three different occasions to just hash out that last bit of given and taken. So just keep in mind, this is a give and take. It isn't, I like everything in this contract and I think that's wonderful, let's go. It's a give and take. And it's hard for me, quite frankly, to understand how we can say, you know, there's potentially a quarter of a million dollars that she has given up, Superintendent Davis has, and for us to say, yeah, but, mm, that's difficult for me. I have to be honest with you. It's a give and take. It's called a negotiation. And so with that in mind, I am, I would like to make a motion that moves that the Board of Trustees approves the superintendent employment contract between the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees and Ms. Tracy Davis effective July 1, 2018.
Okay. And then we want to have, we want to have public comment.
Wait, wait.
Yes, trustee Frankel?
I, I would like for us to at least look at how many other districts do this .1, whatever it is that you guys are talking about. What's wrong with a solid three-year contract? I've never heard that in this Washoe County School District. It's never happened in Las Vegas.
It's a give and take, as trustee Taylor said, because we have some trustees that want a one-year contract and we have other trustees that want a three-year contract. So I think there was a little giving and taking.
Right. And there's been a lot of gives.
Yeah, but that's the reason for that. Why don't we go to public comment? We have a, we have a motion on the floor and let's go to public comment.
David Carter?
Madam President, Madam Vice President, Madam Superintendent and Trustees, my name is David Carter. I'm a resident of the district. I live in the boundaries of McQueen High School. I am also a representative on the State Board of Education, District Two, which includes Washoe County. I made some comments a few months ago about the salary and I appreciate Mrs. Davis's listening to that. In a time of fiscal concerns, there are times when we all have to give up things. I, in my career in school districts, there was even a time where I actually got laid off and they laid off all the managers so that they could make the cuts necessary for balancing the budget. So there aren't sacrifices that are made in a time of fiscal constraint. And I would remind all of you also that as much as we appreciate the work that Mrs. Davis is doing and has done, that your salaries, including you as members of the board, are paid by us taxpayers. And there are a lot of us that are going through significant problems right now, having to cut back on other items that we can't afford, maybe giving up a vacation, maybe giving up going out to dinner as often. And so we are also giving significantly. And as was addressed, the last point I'll make is some of us, especially myself, have felt that for years, the superintendents in Washoe County were way overpaid. And it's not just with Mrs. Davis and her last three-year contract, but going back further. And now that this is more in line with what you would see on a nationwide basis with districts of a similar size, I think it's very appropriate. And I thank everyone for their participation in this and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Judy Inghman?
Welcome back, Mrs. Inghman.
Okay. Let me put my glasses on so I can see this. I was very surprised when I read 3.10. I said, oh my gosh, they've already decided to renew the contract. And then after listening to the discussion, that reinforced my opinion that you have already decided to renew the contract. And then we have Ms. Taylor here, who didn't even want to have the public comment. She just went right to the motion. The, when Ms. Davis was hired in the beginning, it was a fiasco because the board did not follow the public meeting laws and that had to be all redone. The board at that time did such a huge contract for this position. And so she was actually, I think, overpaid for three years. So thank you for realizing that, Ms. Davis. And as a result of that, you're probably going to be able to keep your job. But remember that you did not have satisfactory evaluations by this company that we paid $20,000 to evaluate you. So in my opinion, your contract should not be renewed.
Thank you, Mrs. Inghman.
Roger Edwards?
Mr. Edwards, welcome.
Afternoon. Roger Edwards, a 40-plus-year president and as President Holland knows, very involved with the community. And I'm outraged. I mean, I might not look outraged or act outraged, but I'm outraged. You know, I'm a 37-year military guy. My adjutant general for the state of Nevada doesn't make the kind of compensation that our superintendent makes. You can go down the list. You know, it's, some reports say that the compensation package for a Washoe County School District Superintendent is similar to the governor of the state of Nevada. Now, who in this group, and I know it's double what the county sheriff makes. Now, who in this group, and I know it's double what the county sheriff makes, and how can anybody, any of you trustees that are elected by folks like myself, feel that it's okay to pay a superintendent those kinds of monies? And I applaud Superintendent Davis for the things that she's given up, but it's, you got to look at the base of what this whole discussion's about. And when you've got a school superintendent, who I understand she has 8,000 employees, but she also has 200 principals and 400 vice principals and all that sort of thing to manage the nuts and bolts of it. It's not like she's doing it all herself. So we need to get, step back a bit and renegotiate this whole thing, and I don't know how much you're paying McDonnell and Toronto, but I don't care what a superintendent in Portland or Omaha or Phoenix makes. Their school districts are not on the bottom of the entire country, ours is. You know, I've hired people for 25 years, and I don't pay anybody that doesn't perform. And we have this, you talked about this whole time, measurements and stuff. Well, let's measure how our students are doing to graduate. If we can't graduate students that are ready to go on to college, that's number-one metric. I don't care about how well you spend your WC-1 funds or how many schools you build. If we're not turning out competent students, everything's, everything else is just flimflam. Okay? So we need to look at what's really important and get back to meaningful numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
I think you might have left. Jeff Church?
Mr. Church.
Gwen Taylor?
Welcome, Mrs. Taylor.
I'm so glad I got to go, because I got to go to another appointment, so thank you, Jesus, for this. I just want to make a statement first. A statement that I've heard today from people in this audience is totally false, because the last meeting we attended, when they were discussing superintendent Davis' appraisal, this, whoever did the consulting on this appraisal, there was so much talk about, "Does one mean two, or does two mean three, or does five mean six?" So that is utterly false, that she was unsatisfactory on her appraisal. Now, let me get back to my notes so I don't go off. I'm appalled because we have people on this board that cannot see past color. I'm just going to call a spade a spade. And it's so sad. If this was a white woman sitting here, or a white man sitting here, I don't think we would have the comments that have been made regarding Dr. Davis. She's done a great job. I think a lot of things, I can't quote because I only got three minutes, but this woman is a woman that is outstanding, and I am just appalled at the climate of this, these people in this room. And I want to say that I support the contract that the board has negotiated with Dr. Davis, and I would ask that this board not be prejudiced, because I'll tell you what, I just, it's an underlying current of prejudice in this room. And I'm going to see if we can get some more people of color on this during board, so people will have a voice. And it's really sad that in this day and time, we make all these crazy excuses, and you ought to just come out and say, "I don't like black people. I don't like this black woman." You ought to, you ought to just be honest. And I am very offended by some of the statements that have been made in this meeting, and I wish I had more time to address them. But her being unsatisfactory on this appraisal is totally false, because I was here at this last meeting, and if you guys remember, these people, these consultants, they didn't know what the heck was going on with some of those numbers. And we, they had to rehash numbers, they had to redo things, so for someone to get up here and say she was unsatisfactory is not right. And I, I love Washoe County, I love my country, but the undertone of prejudice in this state, at this state and time is ridiculous. So I would ask the board to dig deep again, because I've got 30 more seconds, and make sure the decision is not made upon race and gender. Thank you for your time. My name is Gwen Taylor. I'm coming not for company representation, it's strictly my personal, my personal view. Thank you, Angie. Thank you for your time. And I got to go to another appointment, I wish I could stay, so I hope this thing rolls right. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Malia Puchta?
Can you say that in the microphone so everybody, oh, okay. Welcome, thank you.
Hi, Malia Puckta.
Puckta, Mrs. Puckta.
Oh, no problem, I'm used to it. So I don't know, Ms. Davis, the only interactions that I have had with you have been at the WC-1 forums that were held when, 2016, I think it was. I didn't realize how many acquaintances I have that are employees of the district at varying levels, from kitchen staff to custodial staff, to office staff, education support staff, teachers, administrators, I mean, it runs the gamut. What I have heard in talking to those people is that they are dissatisfied with the level of leadership that has been exhibited by Ms. Davis. They feel that she is dismissive, sometimes condescending, especially to the office staff. And I don't think that those are, those are good qualities that we want to have in a leader. I believe, again, that, I've said this before, that the board was remiss in just placing an interim into a permanent position. You didn't open that to see and get proof that Ms. Davis is the best candidate, and I think that that's an option that should be explored before her contract is automatically renewed. In regard to the employment agreement put forth, I believe that the compensation, the base salary, is quite high, almost exorbitantly so. I did a Google search to see how much the governor makes, and it shows that his base salary is about $149,000. Members of Congress and the Senate make about $150,000 to $170,000 based on that Google search. The Vice President of the United States of America makes only $200,000 based on that Google search. It seems like the $275,000-plus that is being put forward as a base salary is in excess of what the district can afford, it's in excess of what other elected representatives are given as far as compensation. The deferred, the $15,000 deferred compensation pushes that base compensation up to $290,000 plus, which again, I feel is very exorbitant for a school district facing an over $7 million deficit. This is not a Fortune 500 corporation, and the compensation for the executive officials should not be representative of a Fortune 500 multimillion-dollar multinational company. This is public education, and it should be compensated as such. Our teachers are making $30,000 to $40,000 when they're starting. You've got a superintendent who's going to make a total package over $350,000. We live in Reno, it's not that expensive. It's getting more expensive, but it's not that expensive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Puchta.
James Bethan?
James, welcome.
Hi, my name is James Bethan. I'm a resident of Reno and concerned about education in Nevada. First of all, I want to bring up that the number of students graduating are, that are college-ready, I feel that number that it's college-ready is very low, and that the district needs to make some major changes. We no longer want to be at the bottom of the pile in education. Also, I'm concerned about data mining and its implications for the children as they're growing up with third-party vendors accumulating data on students and not being responsible to parents for this. So I wanted to bring these items up in the hope that these would be, items would be dealt with in hiring of a superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bethan.
John Appolito?
Mr. Appolito?
Hi, my name is, my name is John Appolito. I'm with Protect Nevada Children. I agree with what a lot of trustee Frankel said. I'm most frustrated, we're talking all about Angie Taylor, or Tracy Davis, but I'm most frustrated because nobody's, in my mind, no one's thinking about what's happening with the kids with this data, except for a handful of us. This psychological assessment that was given, this huge data breach that was totally ignored by superintendent Davis, and this legal and illegal stealing of our children's data via these third-party vendors, and now that Cal Berkeley has done this study, and they tell us that these vendors are stealing our children's data illegally, and you, people still don't do anything, I would be against whatever superintendent, man, woman, white, black, green, anybody who would not educate parents on what's happening. And it's very frustrating, I actually get angry. I think you can see that. The infinite campus, and we've been asking these questions for probably coming up on two years, over a year, and this infinite campus data, and I know you said it's required by the state, I get that, why, but if we had a strong superintendent that would bring it up, maybe we could change things. This would be the place to change it, I would help. Why isn't this infinite campus data ever deleted? We haven't got an answer to that question. Why don't you tell parents this data is never deleted? We've never got an answer to that question. Why doesn't the board get involved and tell parents they can come in and view this data that's stored on their children that will be stored forever? This board and superintendent Davis does absolutely nothing. If we had a superintendent that would do this and help educate parents, I would support them. I know several employees of the district who've gone in and checked their own children's data. These people are checking to make sure their kids are going to be safe. I know what to do. 64,000 parents in this district don't know what to do, and it's because of superintendent Davis and this board that they don't know what to do, and I'm very frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
Latoria Romero?
Ms. Romero, welcome.
Thank you.
You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I am here, and I, this is my first board meeting, but I'm speaking on behalf of just a mother of three kids in the Washoe County School District. I have never had a superintendent be as personal as Tracy Davis. When I come to some of the events that they hosted, she wanted to reach out to the community to find out what is the need for our children, and her door was always open. So I'm coming in as a parent, as I said, of minority students who are getting more of education and things that we need. That is very important for me, because sometimes I feel that we were overlooked. So in that aspect, I do feel that Tracy Davis does deserve what she, the board has decided for her to get. It's very hard sometimes as a parent when you going to the school over and over and over again, before Tracy Davis was there, with no answers coming back. It's just a big runaround. But when I know I could go call the superintendent's office, or trustee Angie Taylor, who directed me where to go, and get some answers, that's very important. So I am coming in again as a parent of Washoe County School District of three children to say, Tracy Davis, I think you're doing a great job, and I commend you for all your efforts. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Romero.
Richard Jay?
Mr. Jay, welcome.
Trustees, superintendent, guests, I walked in here today and I said, "I'm not going to talk." I said, "I'm going to just keep my mouth shut and not say anything," you know, but you know me, I have to. And, you know, you know me, people in the audience might know me, but, you know, I'm the guy that pisses everybody off on Facebook, because I post the facts. I research the facts, and I make sure that we get those facts out there, and there's one fact that is really, and excuse my language, pissing me off. Yes, Nevada is number 51 in the nation. I'm not denying that at all. But let's give some credit where credit is due. Washoe County is in the top 19% of the school districts in this country. I'm going to challenge the media to say that. Top 19%. This is as per NICH. NICH puts on their website the criteria for ranking the school districts, which includes testing. Again, top 19%. Compliments to the teachers, compliments to the principals, to the parents, to the students, to the leadership, compliments anywhere. This is what we're supposed to be doing, the top 19%. I don't care about Nevada. Might seem selfish, but I don't care, I care about Washoe County School District. Look at college prep scores. Again, it's online. Take a look at those. You know, I hear people saying, "I don't care what we pay here, and I don't care what we pay there." What other method are we going to do, and how are we going to compare what we're paying our superintendent? Four months ago, and I've shared this with a number of you, I did an Excel spreadsheet, and I looked at the top 40 districts. I looked at 20 above, I looked at 20 below. I looked at salaries, and you know, Mr. Hicks, very spot on. I mean, we were off by maybe a couple of dollars to those, so thank you. But I took it one step further. I looked at student size, I looked at NICH rating, I looked at overall ratings, I looked at reading scores, and I looked at math scores. We exceed every single one of those in those 40 schools. That's important to remember. We're doing the job. Tracy's been a huge supporter of WC-1. Look what's happening with WC-1. Look what you guys are proving, look what the Oversight Committee is proving. We're doing the job that we said we would. You know, when we look at salaries of governors and presidents and vice presidents, we're not looking at the big picture. The governor receives residency. He receives transportation. He receives food. When you factor in the entire package for these elected officials, it far exceeds what the superintendent is making. All I'm asking is, people, do your research, do your homework. How many times have I said that on Facebook? Do your research, do your homework, make sure you know what the heck you're talking about. Great job to all you guys. Thank you, superintendent Davis. I look forward to working with you going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jay.
That's all I have.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, and if that motion doesn't pass, we'll entertain other motions, but let's have discussion about the motion by trustee Taylor and seconded by Vice President Raymond. We have, we have discussion of that motion to approve the contract that is proposed. Trustee Kelly?
Well, there's two things I like about the current contract, that I like a lot about it. The first is that it takes away a lot of the subjectivity that the previous contract had, and so feelings and thoughts and different, those things are being pushed aside, and now we're looking more at the facts and at the data. And I think that's important, because now, instead of saying, "Well, I feel she's doing a good job," or "I think that, you know, she's this or that," we're going to be able to point at facts, and I think that's very important. The second thing I like about this contract is that it does bring the compensation more in line. I agree that the contracts had, had been getting bigger and bigger, and it was, I almost see this as like a course correction, just like in economics, when you have a housing bubble, for instance, the cost, the price that houses can be sold and bought for, it goes up and up and up to the point where it's going well beyond what the house might actually be worth, and then you have market crash, or the bubble burst, or whatever, and it's a course correction. It brings down things in line where they should be. And so I think that by Ms. Davis graciously giving up a lot of the perks and bonuses and things that had been in the previous contract, I think that now we have this course correction, which is great. The one thing about the contract that I don't like is this automatic one-year extension. The thing about that that I don't like is that, one, it takes away the ability of the trustees and the school board of June 2020 from having a good conversation, looking at the information, the facts, the data, getting public input again, and then if everything goes how I think it's going to go, because the school district is doing really well, then the school board at that time can say, "One-year extension, let's do it." But by making it automatic, you take away the ability for the trustees at that time to do that, and you take away the ability of the public to come in and give public comment. So that's a real sticking point with me. And the other thing I don't, I don't like about that automatic one-year extension is just, I know from experience that this community, they want to be involved in some form or fashion with the big, big decisions that local governments make, and whether it's the hiring or firing of a superintendent, or a city manager, or anything of that magnitude, the citizens want to have an ability to give feedback. And by making this automatic, we take that away from them. So I would, I'm not going to vote for the motion, only because of that one sticking point, that automatic one-year. If the motion weren't to pass, and we were to make, amend that one-year to make it based on board vote in June 2020, then I would be able to support that.
Okay, thank you, trustee Kelly. So that would mean, that's a two-year contract, and again, it's a, it's a negotiation, so superintendent Davis may or may not... Superintendent Davis may or may not agree with that. Trustee Mayor?
But that's not an automatic year. It's based on the evaluation.
Correct.
And the public has input into the evaluation.
Correct.
You remember the last time we had an evaluation here? I think they had five grave-hound buses out there waiting, unloading. So, it's not an automatic increase. It's an incre, I mean, year. It's a based-on satisfactory evaluations. So, if she's not doing a good job, the valuation not satisfactory, she doesn't get that year. It's not automatic, right? Or am I wrong?
No, that, that was the intent, and that's what the letter of the contract says, yes. Trustee Kelly?
But that's, that's the problem that I have, though, is we don't know what satisfactory is gonna look like, that, what, what the, we have our strategic plan, and we have the metrics, but we haven't pinpointed what those metrics will be, what their weights will be, just like trustee Frankel had said, and so, I think that we're getting the cart before the horse. I think that, over the next two years, as we really set those specific measures and those metrics, then, in two years, when we look at the, the extension, we'll know exactly what we, what needs to be met in order to say, "Yep, let's extend it for one year," but at this point in time, we don't know what those are. They're still up in the air, they're still being talked about and negotiated, and I just don't think that's, that's a fair way to structure a contract, especially one of this magnitude.
Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. What I would say is, we did, we have this, we have decided upon the metrics, we haven't decided upon the weights, but we have decided upon the metrics. So, it isn't, it isn't as though we're saying, it's based upon an evaluation that we haven't determined, we have determined that, we all worked very hard, um, to do that, and if we were to basically start all over in two years, that's a two-year contract. And part of the give and take is, let's do that and make sure there's some progress being made on those things at the board, and the community has said is important. So, they absolutely do still, do get an idea, I mean, get, do get an opportunity to weigh in. We had 1,200 people weigh in before, we hope that continues to happen. Um, so, there is an opportunity. It isn't taking the, the voice away from the people at all, at, at all, and if we do more than that, then it's a two-year contract, and that's not what, um, we've negotiated for the board to consider. It's a two-year, plus, if satisfactory progress has been made on those things that have already been identified, then another year occurs. And just remember, when you have all the facts that have been included, and all you have is one or two things, that's not that much give and take. We're talking almost a quarter of a million dollars. That's gotta be worth something. That's gotta be worth something.
Thank you, trustee Taylor. Dr. Feimster?
Yeah, what I, thank you very much, Madam President. Uh, Dr. Taylor, what I heard you describe was basically a probationary teacher's, uh, contract. That's what I heard. That's done at that level. And I'm wondering, we're dealing with leadership, we're dealing with the leader of the Washoe County School District, and yet, we're saying, but we're going to use the, uh, the little incubative steps of, uh, a probationary teacher's evaluation. Again, I'm, Nat, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna pick on you again. It's three years?
I, I'm not.
No, I'm, I'm just asking, it's something factual. Teachers are on a probationary contract for three years? Give me a second, I'm just trying to think, I'm processing this. Tracy has already gone through this process. To say that we're gonna pick this one area of, when I talked to her, she's condescending and dismissive. I had a minimum of seven staff members, well, teachers and whatever, at my home over the weekend, because of the people that I probably associate with, or who were associating with me. I heard the very, uh, diametrical opposition of what you heard. And again, that's who we are with. That's who we're with, and that's easily explainable. Uh, I could tell you, I have walked into schools and not been accepted. Why? Because I feel it. You can't take that away from me. I feel it. I feel it. You've been with me when I walked ahead of you, and it was as if, uh, I'm nobody, but the minute John Mayer was seen, there was a different welcoming attitude, atmosphere, everything changed. Let's not forget what, I, I, I do think Gwen, uh, in the red and white, she was a little bit harsh, she said, "Everyone in here," and I want to apologize for that, I don't think she meant that, and Angie, you know her well, she did not mean that.
We have the same last name, but we're not related, so if she's gonna get...
That's right, that's right.
Let's just let the record show that.
And certainly, we, you know, we don't want to comment on anybody else's comment, and I...
I, I know we're against time, but it is so important to understand that what she was trying to say was that she felt like it was coming from every direction. This is a result of just institutional racism across the United States. No one is to blame for this, but we can all do something about it. The little things, it's the little things that you do that can make a difference. And to say, "Tracy, we value the work that you've done, and maybe one day you had a, you weren't feeling well, and, um, you said something condescending or dismissive," I don't know, but, um, that happens sometimes to all of us, and people may feel that we were not, didn't have the best attitude.
Dr. Feimster, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring us back in.
I, I just, yeah, I'm gonna bring us back in. I want us to at least take a look at that third year. Two years, I, again, do you know how many, uh, school districts offered, urban area school district, uh, offered two-year contracts? That should be something that we should know.
Uh, trustee Feimster, I don't know the answer right off the top of my head, but I know there were a variety of terms in those contracts that we looked at, and they were either, they were typically two, three, or four-year terms.
But were there more two than three?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, 'cause I think that is so important, that is so important.
And again, this is a, this is a compromise, we have some trustees that wanted one year, we have some trustees that wanted three years, uh, so, uh, this is a compromise, we, we do have a motion on the table, so I'd like to, to try to see what the vote is on the motion. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So, the motion carries five to two.
I, I didn't vote, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I did not hear, I'm sorry, I blocked out the motion.
Oh, the motion is, uh, in support of the, uh, of the contract that has been presented, made by Dr. Taylor and seconded by Vice President Raymond.
And that's a two-year vote, right?
It's a two-year with a one-year automatic renewal based on meeting the expectations that are outlined in the strategic plan. And we, we had a vote. What happens? Do we call the vote again?
Just do a vote.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote, then, okay. All right, would you call the roll, JJ, on the vote, in favor or opposed to the motion? Let's do, in favor first.
Trustee Feimster?
She's calling for your vote. Aye or nay?
I'm in favor of the two-year with the one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Frankel?
Nay.
Trustee Kelly?
Nay.
President Simon-Holland?
Yay.
Trustee Mayor?
Yay.
Trustee Raymond?
Yay.
Trustee Taylor?
Yay.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and was yours in favor, trustee Feimster? I just, I thought I heard you say yes. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so, the motion passes five to two, and thank you, trustees, thank you, our legal assistants from Josh Hicks and Laura Jacobson staff, and especially Tracy Davis for your cooperation and collaboration in this. Did you want to say anything, Superintendent Davis? I did offer you earlier.
Yes, you did, thank you so much. We are so... I'm glad we got done in time, because we have graduations tonight, so...
Yes, okay, all right, thank you all, appreciate that. Um, we have just a couple other, bless you, a couple other items on the agenda, and I will ask that board members pass on board reports, for the sake of time. Superintendent, did you want to make your report?
Just my... We, we had two schools that came out of acceleration zone, and so, Kristen went to one yesterday, and I went to one today, and so, we're so excited for Warner and Anderson, and so, super excited.
Outstanding. Outstanding. Well, congratulations to everyone who worked on that, thank you. Okay, uh, any future agenda item requests? Yes, ma'am?
Only that we move quickly on trying to take the steps that we need to take to clarify the, the rating categories and how the measures will be evaluated, and also begin conversations about how we're going to implement the survey that we've discussed during those meetings again, so both of those things, probably together.
Thank you, thank you, and actually, I did have that conversation with Chief of Staff last week, so thank you. Do we have any additional public comment, JJ?
I don't believe so.
No additional public comment. Our next meeting, then, will be on June 26th, at two p.m. here in this building, in this room, and with that, we will adjourn to GoToLawler. Thank you. Tracy?